So hello and welcome everyone to this council meeting, Tuesday, July 15th. Here at City Hall, we're nice to see everybody out there and we look forward to hearing from you. And with that, we will move to a roll call, please.
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contra Stalos?
Here.
Mayor Bregel? And Councilmember Fernandez is absent.
Do we have a report out of closed session?
Madam Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Great. So under our mayor's announcements, we have a proclamation for Disability Pride Month to be read by Councilmember Castellano and I believe we have Elizabeth Hostler, Juliana, and Alex here to receive that proclamation. Come on up. Come right up onto here. Welcome.
It's good to see y'all. I'm gonna read the proclamation and then you'll have a chance to share anything you want about the proclamation or any events you have coming up. This is the City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of Disability Pride Month, July 2025. Whereas July is the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, which was passed by the US Congress on July 26, 1990, to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities. And whereas the ADA prevents discrimination based on disability, requires that employers provide reasonable accommodations, is designed so that public accommodations meet accessibility requirements, and is recognized as one of the most important civil rights laws in history. And whereas disability is an important part of normal human diversity. And whereas disability pride enables people with disabilities to redefine unique and shared experiences as points of self-worth, serves as a tool to tackle structural challenges, bias, and discrimination, and reshapes false negative perceptions of individuals with disabilities as people with value, talents, and significance. And whereas the disability rights movement has a long history in California nationally and internationally. And whereas Disability Pride Month is recognized and celebrated in many other cities, including San Francisco, Denver, Milwaukee, and Brighton. And whereas Eureka's Second Annual Disability Pride Fest is scheduled for July 19, 2025. And whereas within the City of Eureka, many organizations support and provide advocacy for persons with all different kinds of disabilities as an expression of our commitment to inclusivity and honoring the needs of every person. Now therefore I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bregel and the Eureka City Council, hereby proclaim that the month of July 2025 is Disability Pride Month in Eureka.
Sure. Thank you for providing the shorter one, for the short among us. So yeah, this is not the first time that the city council has been so welcoming with a Disability Pride proclamation for Eureka. And this year is the 35th anniversary of the ADA and it is also our first local Disability Pride Parade. So the event that is Disability Pride Fest is going to be from 12 to 5 on Saturday, July 19, at the Adorni Center and the parade starts at 2:00 PM from the Adorni Center down to the boardwalk. So and we're gonna have like sign making before that. So and all kinds of different stuff. There's a pop-up arcade, there's food trucks, racks on racks, and fluff and stuff, and Fry Bird Love. So we're, you know, we're really, this has been a wonderful collaborative effort across different organizations in Eureka. So we're really excited. Julie, did you?
Yeah, so I just wanna say that in celebration of the ADA, the ADA has allowed me to be where I am today, you know, in the position that I'm in today. And you know, the ADA has protections for allowing my service dog, you know, into buildings. When I went to other countries abroad, I didn't have that same right and wasn't always allowed in. And so the ADA has allowed me to be welcome, you know, and have the tools that I need to be successful. And I just wanna say that celebrating, you know, disability pride month is a very strong passion of mine. And I think that, you know, being able to get people with, you know, all kinds of different disabilities together to celebrate, to have a good time, you know, to honor themselves for who they are. And, you know, and I just think that's a special thing. And hopefully we can see lots of people come, check it out, and have a good time. And yeah, so it should be, should be great. So thanks. And I'll pass it on.
And then I remembered the thing to pass it back to me.
Yeah, no, it's all you. I'm, you know, my, I'm here as kind of a support. Elizabeth and I work for Redwood Coast Regional Center and we're helping kind of be the home base for organizing the event. But in all things disability pride, I usually defer to the people who have the lived experience. So typically, I don't have a whole lot to add to anything that folks say. But being an ally for folks with disabilities means kind of sometimes being quiet and stepping back and letting folks who actually have firsthand experience talk about what the challenges are and then also lead the celebration for all of the fun stuff that comes with it sometimes, too.
I just, because I remembered, I'm a human set of talking points and I remembered some more of them. So just that I think disability pride can mean a lot of different things. My shirt says disability is not a bad word. So I think even just that by itself, saying the word disability and talking about disability really allows Eureka to take steps forward in how we support all people, right? And that, the, and I'm really, we're partnering with groups that support parents. And so there's like all ages activities this year. And it's really just a way to showcase some of the great organizations in this city and the different, because we have a bunch of tabellers. And so it's a way to really learn about the ways people are thriving and being supported in this wonderful place. So.
Well, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate you. And I would be remiss if I didn't, just in this moment, honor my dear friend and advocate and volunteer extraordinary Charlie Bean, who we lost several years ago. Just an excellent, wonderful person. But we look forward to your event happening June 19, 2:00 PM down at the boardwalk.
July.
July. It's July. It is July. That's what happens when you're at school. You forget these things. All right. And with that, we're gonna move on to our presentations. We have a presentation this evening from Recreation Supervisor Jim Thomas, Get Out and Play Day, coming up July 26. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, Council. I'm excited to be here tonight on behalf of the Recreation Division to present about Get Out and Play Day and some of the fun activities that are taking place on July 26, all over the City of Eureka. This is the 11th Annual Get Out and Play Day. It's celebrating free recreation all throughout town. This year, we have 15 locations. And we have a map passport this year, encouraging people to make it to a variety of locations. So you can get a stamp and enter a raffle ticket into a grand prize drawing by attending each of the events at each of these locations. This year, we are returning with a lot of familiar locations and events, including the Matikit, Humboldt Bay Aquatic Center, Halverson Park will have free kites, Claire Mayberry has interactive art projects and storytime, the Clark Museum's having free admission, the Discovery Museum is free as well, Cooper Gulch has a skateboard competition, Sequoia Park Zoo is free for kids 12 and under with a paying adult, and there is animal feedings taking place every hour. The golf course has a variety of free activities as well. Sequoia Park is where we get the Team All Day shirts from because we are at Sequoia Park all day, starting with yoga, zumba in the park comes next. We'll have hum bubbles out there blowing their large, human-sized bubbles and small bubbles in between. We'll have a juggling act from Sean Lang. Humboldt Bay Fire will be there with their slip and slide, the Family Olympics from 2 to 4, where Mayor Bregel will be helping us out on that day as well. Very exciting. After the Family Olympics concludes, we'll transition into a concert from Uncle Skunkle, a family-free, family-friendly rock band. And we end the night with a movie in the park at Sequoia Park. Also, we're really excited this year to add three new locations that are, have never been done before. We're gonna have some pickleball activities at Highland Park. Carson Park will have line dancing and a 16-team cornhole tournament. And there is gonna be all sorts of dog fun at the Del Norte Dog Park with swimming pools, tennis ball hide-and-seek, and some agility courses as well. So really excited for another year of this event. I think it means a lot to the community and just, you know, people get to try some things that they maybe haven't tried before and yeah, go to some different parks and just create a really fun environment all over the City of Eureka. None of this could happen without our wonderful partners who are on this map and promotion for the event, Clark Historical Museum again, Humboldt County Library, Humboldt Skate Collective, and many more, as you can see, home plate batting cages as well as up there. Yeah, so I hope everyone can make it out on July 26. It's gonna be a really fun, special event for the community and would love to turn it over for any questions that you might have.
Questions? Councilmember Moulton?
Yeah.
Not a question so much as a comment. Thank you for the presentation and to the staff and everybody's hard work for making all of this happen, having so many different things happening all over the city is very cool. And I was just appreciating that there's something for a wide variety of ages. You know, my, my mother-in-law, who is in her, however old she is, is an avid pickleballer all the way down to the slip and slide. So love the variety. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we take a lot of pride in making recreation and fun accessible to a wide variety of interests. So thank you. Appreciate that. And also, I brought some shirts and maps for you guys.
Well, thank you very much. I'm so grateful that we're not gonna be cleaning fish this year. That was so disgusting, but.
You did a great job, though.
Thank you.
You did a great job.
It was pretty icky. But hope to see everybody out here. What a great event.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for the time, y'all.
Okay. All right. And then we have the Carson Park Playground Project with Project Manager Prasker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Robin Prasker with the Community Services Department. And we are so excited to announce the Carson Park Playground Improvement Project as a partnership with Kiwanis. Carson Park is located between Boone and Carson, between H and I Street. And just for a quick recap, we did do a large community visioning project to come up with future improvements the community desired, and that has fed into all improvements to date and the future improvements. We do have a master plan and Phase 1 was complete. Not to totally recap what's been said, but new restroom and basketball court, special thanks to Rotary and CR Construction Technology Class. But moving into the playground specifically, we do have Kiwanis here tonight, John and Terry, to share a little bit about their club and then we'll talk about the project. So come on up, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed council members. So we're very excited. Kiwanis, I don't know how many of you know what Kiwanis is. It's a global organization. It also, our focus is strictly, well, not strictly, we do a lot of projects, but our main focus is on kids. And so we have, go ahead and click to the next one if you want. So serving the children of the world. Playgrounds are so important for kids to get out, get away from the games, you know, let's go play out in the yard. We have a longstanding history of helping with Carson Park, of service and improvement projects. We painted buildings inside and out, participated in the city's Adopt a Park program, and provided landscape maintenance. Now we're so fortunate to partner with the city for the rehabilitate, to rehabilitate the playground area as our 75th anniversary project. As you can see, these are our current projects that we work on year-round, you know, every year. So but this, we're really excited about this. So, yeah. Is that it? Okay. Do you have any questions or?
I'll introduce how we're gonna make the playground happen. And then if Council has questions, they'll invite you up. Does that sound good? Okay, thanks, guys.
Thanks for your time.
So, meeting with our wonderful Kiwanis friends and finding out that the Kiwanis Club has a partnership with a playground company called Landscape Structures, who the city's actually worked with in other parks and is a great vendor. And Kiwanis gets a special pricing and it's a volunteer build model. So Kiwanis actually here did this at Redwood Fields in Cutton and did a volunteer build. These are pictures from their project that was super successful. And that is what they brought to us as the potential project that we could do at Carson Park. So, working with Landscape Structures, we identified a multiple playground structures for different ages, a 2 to 5 tower and a 5 to 12 tower, along with two other items that are standalone, a spinner and a teeter totter. And this is what we're proposing for Carson Park and now launching a fundraiser to fund. So the fundraising goal is $150,000. And this month is the official launch of the fundraiser. And over the next year, we'll work together to secure the funds. And we're hoping for sometime next spring, summer, during our dry season, so we can wrap this up by the end of their year-long anniversary celebration to have that final party to celebrate. So all the donations are live. Kiwanis has set up an online donation platform and we have flyers for Council and the public tonight. You can also call Terry here and she'll help facilitate a potential donation as well. And dovetailing back to Get Out and Play Day, Jim announced that there'll be line dancing and cornhole at Carson Park and our Kiwanis friends will be tabling to promote the project. You can come learn more about it, chat about it, see how you can get involved. It'll definitely be, definitely be a community lift to make this project happen. So we're definitely excited to start engaging folks about improving that playground. So that concludes our announcement for tonight. And definitely would like to hear any questions or comments for myself or our Kiwanis friends here.
So do we have any questions? Comments? Councilmember Castellano?
It's not a question. It's just a comment. Just wanna thank you all for your commitment to children in Eureka. It's, it's really important that, yeah, kids in Eureka are seen and taken care of and have places to play. And I really love the volunteer build model. That's very cool. Yeah, so I, you know, look forward to celebrating this and spreading the word, too. And thanks for your ongoing commitment to the city.
Thank you. Anything further? Councilmember Moulton?
I just wanna echo that gratitude from Councilmember Castellano for all the work that goes into these and especially the volunteers and the community coming out for this. Free public spaces for kids to play in, for families to go to, for anyone to go to, is just what makes a community come together. And I just wanted to say that folks have been complimenting or asked me to pass on compliments about the fact that we are including a dog run, a fenced-in dog piece in this park that was very much needed. You know, we have our great dog parks, our off-leash spaces, but to have more smaller ones throughout the community makes them more accessible to a lot of folks who have dogs but might not have access to vehicles or the ability to transport them around and wanna have a chance for them to play in the park along with the kids. Well, you know, with a fence in between them and the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And I too wanna just share my appreciation. You know, we go there, it's walkable from the middle school that I work at to go there for different events and things like that. And so what a boon, what a great thing for our kids. It's just so exciting. And Eureka High, they also do things over there. So, you know, it's nice to have that cohesiveness. And, you know, our kids are our future. I appreciate any work that we do together and bringing community together to make that happen. So thank you so much. You're appreciated. Councilmember Bauer?
Ditto all that. But also appreciate what you do for like the top, top 10% lunch. That was a great time. It's so great you recognize the kids at Eureka High for that and I think Arcade High, too, right? Wasn't it? Yeah, just Eureka. And I look forward to helping you build this playground. So make sure you let us know when it happens. Thanks.
We're in it. All right. Anything further? All right. Well, thank you so much.
I'm gonna leave some flyers. So if anybody here tonight wants more info, I'll put them on the table out front.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to our presentation from Redwood Coast Energy Authority. Great to see you, Beth Burks. Come on up.
Hi, everybody. Hi, my name's Beth Burks. I'm the Executive Director of the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And I'm joined today by Richard Engel, our Director of Power Resources, and Marisha Ramirez, our Account Services Manager. And we're gonna talk a little bit about affordability in terms of your electric bills. But first, we wanna cover a little bit about what is RCA. We are the generation portion of your electric bill. We are not an extra charge, but we are working towards providing energy that is 100% renewable and carbon-free. And we are quickly approaching this goal. And so it helps to keep our energy dollars local. We're what's called a community choice energy aggregator. And by keeping the money local, we're able to invest in our community and other programs, such as we have an electric vehicle charging network. We also have a variety of programs that work to bring energy efficiency and electrification to homes and businesses. And we house the Northern Rural Energy Network, which has a variety of assessments and rebates that businesses and residents can get to support electrification and energy efficiency. So we have a wide variety of programs. And we're able to do that because we largely, money comes from a variety of sources, but largely because we have this community choice energy aggregation. RCA is a joint powers agency. All the cities within Humboldt County are a part of our organization, in addition to the Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District, the Eurequ Tribe, and the Blue Lake Rancheria. So we did a version of this presentation at our own board meeting in April. It was about 45 minutes long, so we have deeply cut it for this presentation. But if you're interested in the full, full presentation, you can find that at our, at our website. And basically, you know, we, we did this study session on affordability because we kept hearing from our board members how concerned their constituents were about their utility bills and how it kept going up and why was this happening? What are these charges on the bills? And so we wanted to give a deeper understanding of that. So in a much more, in a much abbreviated version, we do wanna give you a deeper understanding of rates versus bills and what are the cost drivers behind this and ways we can reduce your bills. So we'll talk a little bit about that at the end. And just to kinda highlight the concern over affordability, I'm sure that you all hear this from, from your constituents as well and, and others. But we are in an area of affordability concern as defined by the California Public Utilities Commission. And what that means is that customers in the lowest 20% of income are paying more than 15% of their remaining money after they pay for housing, water, gas, and energy, and gas. And they're paying more than 15% of that for energy alone. So in our area, that works out to be residents who are earning about $18,000 or less would, would qualify in this, in this mix. And the CPUC says when you have 15% of your population or more fitting this criteria, that you're in this area of affordability concern. And so you can see most of Humboldt County falls within that area, as well as a good chunk of the City of Eureka. And just to kinda do some math on this, so by using these sort of percentages that they identify and some very general assumptions about, you know, rental rates and that kind of thing. But if for folks are earning about $18,000 a year, their energy bill would need to be about $33 a month to be affordable. And so, you know, a lot of folks are definitely seeing higher bills than that. So you can kinda see where that discrepancy is. And another indicator of sort of the acute nature of our, of our community in terms of experiencing high energy bills is the amount of people enrolled in income qualification programs to get discounts on their electricity bills. So these Care and Fair programs are through PG&E. And at least a third of our, roughly a third of our customers fall within these programs, income qualify for them, or are actually enrolled. We suspect that far more qualify than are enrolled. And that's actually, we'll cover that at the end about how to reduce your bill. But just to kinda highlight, again, you know, this is clearly a critical, critical mass for our community and something we're paying attention to. So with that, I'll turn it over to Marisha, who can give us a better way to understand what, what is on the electricity bill and how to interpret it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Marisha. I'm the Account Services Manager here at Redwood Coast Energy Authority. And I'm gonna go over your bill with everyone and kinda teach everyone how to also compare your cost savings if you're RCA customer or if you're a bundled customer. So to start, we're gonna start with what a PG&E bill looks like. So right here, this is the page that everybody is used to seeing, the first page of your bill. This is an example of an actual customer. We've adjusted the numbers just slightly for confidentiality reasons. On the first page, you can see your RCA total charges. If a customer has a payment plan, as this customer does, you'll also be able to see it on the first page. And if somebody is enrolled in any of the programs Beth just mentioned, like Care, FARA, or Medical Baseline, it will also show up on the front page here. So if you think that you will qualify for one of these programs and you look at your bill and you don't see that there, give us a call and we'll help you enroll in one of those. So our page is not located anywhere near the top. It's, you have to scroll a little bit. So depending on your bill and your rate, we might be on the seventh or eighth or ninth page. So eventually, you will find the details of Redwood Coast Energy Authority page. And this is what ours looks like. So we are on everybody's PG&E bill who is not a bundled customer. On this page, you can see your total usage, RCA's contact info, which we are working to actually phase out the 1-800 number and only have our local number. I would like to point out that even though we have a 1-800 number, it is all leading to our local number. So it's local staff helping you. So if you call us, it'll be somebody from a Eureka office, we have two of them, that will be helping you. Next, you can also see what rate you're on, on the Redwood Coast Energy page. You could also see this on your PG&E electric portion of your bill as well. It's listed in a couple different places. And then next, you'll be able to see if you are using more during off-peak or on-peak on this page as well. And this particular bill has a couple of winter charges on there because we processed a rate change between the time that this bill came out. So this is an average, but sometimes customers will see things like this that make their bill complicated to read. So if you have any questions about your bill and why you're seeing four different winter charges, feel free to call us and we'll be happy to explain that to you. And again, you can also see the total on this page as well. So PG&E's Electric Delivery Charges page, I bring this up because in order to compare what your cost savings is to RCA, you'll have to reflect and look at the electric. you'll have to reflect and look at the Electric Delivery Charges page, where you can see what's referred to as the Generation Credit in a negative amount. The reason this is in a negative amount is because PG&E is deducting it because we, RCA, are charging you for this. Next, there is the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment that you will need to reference for our little math problem that we will do next. And then there is the Franchise Fee. Both of those fees are what everybody pays. So, we're going to do a little calculation together. So, the original fee that Redwood Coast Energy Authority, that I pointed out that we show on the first page and on the details of Redwood Coast Energy Authority is listed right there in green for $36.22. And then, what I just went over from the PG&E Electric Delivery Charges page, which was that Generation Credit and the Power Charge Indifference and Franchise Fee. So, if we take the Generation Cost and then we take the PCA and the Franchise Fee and we add it all together, we'll get what's called the comparable amount for this project of calculation. And then, we will take the PG&E Generation Credit, which was shown in negative for $39.17, and we will subtract that comparable amount, and you'll get to your savings of 29 cents. And I'd like to note that if you do this calculation on your own bill, it will not be 29 cents. Everybody's will be a little different, and this one was adjusted slightly for confidentiality reasons. So, do we have any questions about that?
Not yet.
Okay. Alrighty, I'm going to pass it over to Richard Engel.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marisha. Good evening, Mayor Bergel and council members. I'm Richard Engel, Director of Power Resources. And I'm just going to talk a little bit more about what makes up the charges that customers pay. As Beth mentioned earlier, the charges that RCA has on the utility bill is only a portion of the total electricity charges that a customer pays. And this graph here shows for the Time of Use C residential electricity rate, which is the rate that most of our residential customers are on. It just shows the breakdown of what RCA is charging customers versus what PG&E is charging. When we first launched our program, I used to tell people it was about a 50-50 split between RCA charges and PG&E charges, and that was accurate back then. But as I'll show in a future slide, that has changed a lot over time. So, as you can see here, it's currently roughly about 2/3 of the charges that are what you're paying PG&E, and that's for delivery of the electricity, which is broken down into transmission, which is kind of moving the electricity over long distances between cities, and then distribution being kind of what is charged for the local delivery, getting it to your home or business. So, in this recent example, the total amount of PG&E and RCA charges came to about a little more than 42 cents a kilowatt hour. And you can see the little sliver over on the right is that PG&E, PCA, and Franchise Fee that Marisha mentioned, which is currently a pretty small slice. But we just got some news today about projections for that to increase substantially. That's sometimes referred to as kind of an exit fee. It's what PG&E charges the customers who participate in a Community Choice Energy Program. And the idea behind it is to make PG&E whole for commitments they made for power purchases before our program existed, like longstanding old contracts that they had for power to customers they're no longer serving. So, we spent a lot of time talking about rates. That was most of what Marisha presented to you because rates are what we think about all the time in our work. But what do customers really care about? It's not the rates, it's the total bill. And if you think about it, you have to multiply the rate, dollars per kilowatt hour, times the amount of usage, how many kilowatt hours are being used, to come up with the bill. So, if you really care about affordability, you don't want to just think about rates, you also want to think about the usage. Our team focuses mostly on the rates. We have a separate team at RCA that's called the Demand Side Management Team. And those are the folks that actually deliver the customer programs that are meant to help people reduce their electricity usage. So, I'm very proud working at RCA that even before we had a Community Choice Energy Program, starting in 2017, for more than a decade before that, we had these Demand Side Management or Customer Programs that were helping people reduce their bills, even before RCA was the one providing the electricity. So, we, you know, a lot of our engagement with customers is helping refer them to those customer programs that we run that help them reduce that usage to keep the bill under control. As promised, here's a little bit of history of how those delivery charges from PG&E, which is the blue part here, kind of compares and how it's trended compared to the generation charges. In this case, this graph is actually for bundled customers who are getting both their generation and their delivery from PG&E. But the story is very, very similar, even if it's RCA providing the electricity, because we just have that very small discount we provide below PG&E's generation rates. So, if RCA's line was on there, it would be a line that's just a tiny, tiny bit below the brown line at the bottom, representing us having a very slightly lower generation charge. But as you can see, the generation charges have been relatively stable over time, while the delivery charges, the transmission and distribution, have really trended strongly upward. And the main explanation for that in recent years has been about wildfire. You know, since the wildfires that happened, you know, including ones that are directly traceable to failures on the electrical system that started the fires. PG&E, with the Public Utilities Commission permission and encouragement, have made huge multimillion-dollar investments in what they call grid hardening, which is, you know, a very expensive process of reinforcing the grid in ways that will make it less likely to cause wildfire. But that has certainly come with a cost that shows up on customer bills. So, how do our rates compare? Well, as we've talked about, we do have a small discount below PG&E's rates. So, if you look at the rates column there, the RCA number is just a little bit smaller than the PG&E number. For California as a whole, the rates are much lower than PG&E or RCA. Why is that? It's mainly because of municipal utilities. About a quarter of the electricity sold in California gets sold through municipal programs like SMUD in Sacramento or LA Water and Power. And just municipal utilities have a long history of being able to deliver electricity for much lower costs than utilities like PG&E are able to do. And if you go down to the US row, you know, we're told time and again that California has high utility rates. We certainly do. The US rate is only a little more than half of what California electric rates are, which is one of the reasons that it's, you know, hard to attract industries to California. And a lot of them that are here consider moving out of state because they know they can get their electricity so much cheaper elsewhere. Now, it's interesting, if you look at the bills column, it doesn't really follow directly from what you see looking at the rates. In California, the bills tend to actually be higher than they are here on the North Coast. And that has a lot to do with climate. You know, we just have a really mild climate on the North Coast. Most homes here don't even have air conditioning. And summer air conditioning usage is one of the really big drivers of residential electric bills elsewhere in the state. So, even though the rates are much lower in California, their total bills tend to be higher than we have here. And that's reinforced again at the US level. You know, even though their rates are dramatically lower than California's, their total bill is still fairly close to what electric customers pay here on the North Coast. So, with that, I'm going to hand things back to Beth to take things home.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so, we wanted to cover just a little bit on ways that people can lower their bills. And certainly, if you think, you know, if people think they may qualify or they could be income-qualified for Care or FARA, you want to sign up for that, you can reach out to us. We can help with that. And, you know, I would say if anyone's on any other type of program, like CalFresh or something like that, or Medi-Cal, chances are good that you would also qualify for these programs. So, that'd be a really quick indicator. You can call RCA and request an analysis to determine if you're on the most economic rate. Sometimes, depending on the way you use electricity in your home, different rates could be more beneficial. So, simply changing the rate could have a positive impact on your bill. And then also, we have a ton of rebates and programs to reduce energy usage. So, we can help you with home energy assessment. We can give you a free residential energy savings kit. It's got a tool in there that actually like helps you. You know, you can plug it in and see how much each individual appliance is using to give, you know, just kind of think about it in addition to a lot of other, a lot of other fun things that help you save energy. So, we've got a wide variety of ways that we can be of service. And I also wanted to mention that PG&E has a program right now called Match My Payments. And this is for people who are more than $100 past due on their energy bills through PG&E. And anyone who's up to 400% above the federal poverty limit can qualify. So, this is even a little bit higher income earners that don't often qualify for things like Care and FARA. But if you start making payments towards your past due amount, PG&E will match that amount up to $1,000. So, it's a really good time to kind of get current on your bills, if that's something that somebody can do. And again, you can get information on all of this at PG&E's website, but we're happy to help facilitate that as well and let you know where to go and be kind of a liaison in that respect. And then, again, just things that we do. We do, we spend a lot of our time directing customers. Again, I think Marisha mentioned, you know, we're all local here, so we have a staff answering the phone. They're here in Eureka. You can stop by the office. But we do direct customers to existing resources and programs, both our own and PG&E's. We do like to inform customers of the savings of RCA that we have delivered over the course of our existence. So, you know, as a Community Choice Energy Aggregator, we've been around since 2017. And, you know, I know Marisha showed that example of, you know, 29 cents a month here and there. But it really does add up. Those savings have amounted to over $7 million in savings for rate payers throughout Humboldt County since we came into being. So, it's just a little bit every month, but collectively, it really has made a big difference. And then, you know, we want to really educate customers and our community about the root challenges and the balancing act needed when we consider, you know, what goes into an electricity bill. And so, as Richard mentioned, you know, things related to wildfire are in there. And so, it really is this balancing act. We have affordability, but we do want to have a safe transmission and distribution system. We do want to have energy reliability. We want our energy to be clean, and we want to have innovative programs around this. So, it all has to constantly be balanced with affordability. So, you know, that's what our team works really hard on and advocates for in a lot of different venues to make sure we keep all those things in mind at the same time. So, with that, that's kind of the end of our presentation. You know, we'd really just encourage folks to, you know, reach out to us if they have any questions, and we'd be happy to take them now from all of you as well.
Any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Now, I want to thank you, you all, for the presentation. I mean, I received this at the board meeting, you know, and trying to get the public to demystify our energy, our bills, is super important. And there's a lot of people, I'm sure, that qualify for Care that just don't understand how to, you know, they just don't understand how to get through the process. And I know staff at RCA are helpful, and I hope they reach out to you all because you do work tirelessly on trying to make it affordable and the organization. I hope people are paying attention, because this is really good presentation. And I hopefully it helped people understand what RCA does. And I think it's really important that the 2/3 of the cost being transmission. And I have to often explain that to people, like, you know, electrons are free from the sun, but we have to get those electrons to you. And the transmission is very expensive. And I hope people understand that when they're, you know, paying their bill. We're trying our best to, you know, make it more affordable. I real, do you have a question about the PCA, Richard? And I know you said the rates are going up on that. Can you dive into that a little bit?
Sure, I can. And before that, I wanted to throw in one quick thing that Marisha reminded me we should have said, which is that in addition to having locally-based customer service, we do have a few of them, including Marisha, who are bilingual, so we're able to help Spanish-speaking customers. And we've been working on getting more of our materials in Spanish as well. To the Power Charge Indifference Adjustment, yeah, what's happening there is that the, there's a complicated formula that goes into determining how much that charge is. And like I said, the intent of it is to make PG&E and the other investor-owned utility companies whole for investments that they entered into in good faith before they knew that RCA was going to come along and take away some of their customers through this Community Choice Aggregation that we now have access to. So, fair enough, right? You know, those were investments that they did make, and they didn't want to put all of that on their remaining customers that they're serving elsewhere in the state. So, part of what goes into calculating that is comparing the, what PG&E is spending on those procurement contracts to what they could turn around and unload that energy for on the market today. And so, there's what's called market price benchmarks that are set to determine that differential. And so, it's kind of a paradox thing where if market energy prices go up, then the PCI goes down because there's less damage that PG&E is suffering by turning around and selling the power they don't need. When energy prices are low, the PCA goes up because PG&E is hurting more by not being able to unload that energy at costs close to what they originally are paying for it. So, there's this kind of inverse relationship. And what we've been seeing just in the last few months has been, so we basically pay for three different kinds of energy products. We actually pay for the kilowatt hours that we turn around and sell to the customers. We also pay for renewable energy attributes. So, there's this kind of premium when you're buying solar energy or wind energy. And the extra cost of that is expressed in what are called renewable energy certificates. And then, there's a third component, which is called resource adequacy, which is kind of an abstract concept. But it's basically just paying power generators for the capacity that they have to generate power. And the intent behind that is to make sure that everybody who's selling electricity, like RCA or PG&E, is investing enough in that capacity to make sure that the grid is reliable in all seasons and all times of day. So, what we've seen lately has been all three of those products have actually declined in price in the last few months after mostly trending upward in the last few years. So, the PCA stayed pretty low because of those market price benchmarks being high. And now that the market price benchmarks are dropping, that's forcing the PCA up. It's kind of a teeter totter. So, that's in a nutshell what's going on right now.
So, how does that affect our bills, I guess, is the big question?
Well, it shouldn't affect a customer's bill, but it squeezes RCA because under our current model of pricing, we set our rates to be below PG&E's. But when we're doing that comparison, we have to take into account that PCA that PG&E charges the customers. You know, as Marisha explained, when we're comparing our rates against PG&E's, we're taking our rates plus the PCA and franchise fee. The franchise fee is kind of trivial and doesn't change much over time, but the PCA is quite volatile for the reason I just explained. So, when that PCA gets big, we have to look at our rates and push them downwards so that the sum of those plus the PCA does not exceed PG&E's rate. So, I won't say that the PCA going up makes our customers pay more, but it makes us charge less, and that makes our program less and less financially viable. So, we just had a presentation from the Energy Authority, the outside company that helps us with our portfolio management. And just this morning, they were showing us the latest numbers on that and how we can expect our, you know, net revenues that we use to build reserves and fund customer programs, that's just getting squeezed smaller and smaller over the next couple of years if this PCA continues to play out the way it is.
Thank you for the information. Appreciate it.
Anything further? Saying none. Thank you so much for being here. That was very informative. We appreciate you. And that takes us to our public comment, period. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Each time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Time allotment for public comment on non-agenda items, a maximum of 30 minutes shall be allotted to receiving public comments in the initial public comment period. If necessary, an additional period shall be allotted to public comments after city manager reports, but only if the first 30-minute public comment period was not sufficient to allow all those who wish to speak to do so. The public will be allowed to speak. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item at the time an item is considered. The mayor will ask those attending the meeting in person to line up on both sides of the council chambers or raise their hands for remote participants to use nine, or excuse me, star nine on the telephone or the raise hand function in Zoom if they wish to address the city council. The maximum amount of time for each person to speak and the total amount of time allotted for each item will be determined based on the number of people indicating an interest in speaking and the amount of business to be conducted on the agenda. In certain circumstances and when necessary, to ensure a full opportunity for public input, the mayor may adjust the amount of time allowed for public input and/or the time allotted for each speaker. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Welcome.
Welcome. Greetings to you all. Good to see you again. I have a scripture for you. Why do the nations rage and the people plot a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, "Let us break their bonds in pieces and cast their cords from us. He who sits in heaven shall laugh. The Lord shall hold them in contempt, then he shall speak to them in their, in his wrath and distress them in his deep displeasure. Yet I have set my king on my holy hill of Zion." I was supposed to read this to you about maybe a month ago. "The Lord gave me these verses to read to you, like I said, about a month ago. And I asked him, 'How can I change people who always think they are doing the right thing?'" "In response, he said to me, 'You don't. That's what I do.' I have obeyed and I trust he will do the rest because today is the day of salvation. And I trust his will over your counsel and how you decide things, that he will speak to you and you will listen.'" "And I appreciate your time for allowing me to be here and speak to you as well. Like I said, this is not my favorite ministry, but I do it out of obedience and because of you guys. Lord bless you and keep you. Thank you. Amen."
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers here to speak on a non-agenda item? Seeing no one, we will bring it over to Zoom. Ellen?
I am calling to tell you all again how much I'm looking forward to the staff report on CalPERS and hope that all of you will take action by sending the letter drafted for you to the board of directors. As you know, CalPERS has invested $1.6 billion in companies profiting from Israel's genocide of Palestinians. You can find the letter at divesthumboldt.wordpress.com and follow us at @divesthumboldt on Instagram for updates. I'm going to read an excerpt from a statement shared yesterday by Azadeen Shahab, a doctor in Gaza. "A truck passed by. It was empty. Its floor was covered in a thin layer of flour dust, just dust, not bags, not bread, only the trace of something that might once have saved a child. And then I saw them, not rebels, not criminals, children. They ran, ran like hunted things toward that truck. They climbed it with hands that have never held toys. They fell to their knees as if before an altar, and they began to scrape. One had a broken lid, another a piece of cardboard, but the rest, the rest used their hands, their tongues. They licked it. Do you hear me? They licked flour dust from rusted steel, from dirt, from the back of a truck that had already driven away. One boy was laughing, not because he was happy, but because the body goes mad when it is starving. Another was crying quietly, like someone who no longer believes anyone is listening. And I stood there with all my shame, with my hands in my pockets, like a man waiting for a bus, like I wasn't watching the end of the world. I wanted to scream, but what scream can reach heaven when heaven itself is deaf? What words can I offer? What words can explain the sound of child's tongue scraping against rust for a taste of flour? There are no metaphors left. There is no beauty in this, only sin, only crime, and we are all guilty." End quote. 61 Palestinians were murdered in Gaza yesterday by the Israeli forces. The total death toll of this genocide is impossible to know, but it is estimated at around 400,000 people. At least 875 starving people have been killed since May while seeking food at the so-called humanitarian aid sites, which are actually just traps run by Israelis and Americans. Democracy Now! reported today that Israel is increasingly using grenade firing drones to enforce evacuation orders. With an Israeli soldier quoted as saying, "It's like a video game." Israel and the US and international surveillance heavy equipment and weapons companies continue to provide for and profit from this Holocaust. I urge you to send the letter to CalPERS tonight." What on earth are you waiting for?
Thank you, Ellen. Carpani?
Hello?
Hello?
Thank you for holding the space for us to be able to speak. I'm, I'm a bit in shock. Ellen just presented one of the most vivid accounts of what goes on in Gaza and other places in the world daily. I came here tonight simply to say that I have not yet heard that Mayor Burgele or any, or the council persons, Bauer, Moulton, or Contreras de Loach have sent their letters to CalPERS. I, 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 especially after hearing that quote, I can't even imagine, if you know anything about it, what would keep you from sending those letters? How in the world could you live with being connected to those kinds of atrocities? The number of children that are killed every day playing in the dust, then dead. I, I, I just, I cannot wrap my mind or my heart around anything that would keep you from sending those letters. Because when you're taking your retirement, believe me, if you never sent the letter, you're gonna feel, you're gonna feel the death on your soul. So if you haven't sent the letters, please send them. I, I, I don't know what else to say. I yield.
Thank you, Carpani. Alice?
I, I want to thank Ellen for sharing that. That was a really vivid explanation of what our Palestinian community is going through every day. So I'm just having a hard time talking right now. But I do want to thank the city council for honoring our disability community this month. I really, really appreciate respecting and including all of our community. And I am looking forward to the city report of CalPERS investment in companies that support genocide. And I want to thank council member Castellano for sending your letter in. And I want to ask you, Mayor Burgele, council member Bauer, council member Moulton, and council member Contreras de Loach, if you have sent your letters in yet. Here's why, I think Ellen really explained why it's important, but I've been speaking with a lot of people about Palestine and there are still so many misconceptions about Israel and their war against Palestine. It's not a holy war. It's not about religion or about Jews having a country and land that is historically significant to them. If it truly was about religion, the colonial project that is Israel would have never considered creating a state in other countries, which they did, like Kenya, Argentina, Alaska, Australia, or Madagascar. Israel uses religion as a shield to lull the unknowing or those who don't take the time to uncover the truth, to make them think that it is reasonable that they take land that has been cared for and lived in by Palestinians for thousands of years and occupy it illegally and violently themselves. It's not okay and it is far beyond time that we all know this. And for those people who say this does not have anything to do with us, we have to know this is another lie. Our money is invested in institutions like CalPERS. It's directly funding this Holocaust against Palestinians. Besides that, our government agreed to give Israel $38 billion in military aid over the decade of 2017 to 2028. Imagine what these tens of billions of dollars could do for our own United States. We have a housing crisis. People are going without food. Veterans are not getting the services they were promised. Millions of us are not getting the healthcare we need. The environment is in peril. I literally could go on and on. It's imperative that we do every single thing we can to divest in Israel and stop this active Holocaust against Palestinians. And we also have to know, there was a recent poll in Israel, 82% of Israelis believe there are no innocents in Gaza.
Thank you, Alice. Phone number ending in 126? Phone number and area code 949?
Hi, I hope you can hear me. I would like-
You're kind of quiet. Can you turn up your volume? Maybe we can do that here.
I would also-
There, we can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate also the honoring of the disabled community and I really appreciate the opportunity to do this from Zoom. So thank you for that. I very much look forward to the report on the investments that CalPERS has in genocide and in the war machine in general. I don't know if you're aware that Francesca Albanez, they have, she's the human rights rapporteur on Palace, on the Palestinian territory. She has published a report on like, she companies detailing how they legitimize and profiteer from this genocide. But not just that, but also the longstanding occupation, which the World Court rules July of 2024 is criminal, as well as the illegal settlements, all of which, if apartheid must be dissolved, dismantled by July 2025. Obviously, that's not happening. Instead, it's violent ethnic cleansing in all of occupied Palestine, as well as genocide of various speeds. The final solution. So what we are seeing is just the end result of the expansion of settler colonial project on the lands of Palestine, started by European Zionists and racists who don't give a damn about Jews, just the way Israel doesn't give a damn about Jews or the United States for that matter. Palestinians, I remind, speak a Semitic language and they are being annihilated right now. I was watching a video last week of a toddler on the floor of a makeshift patient area in Gaza. Their hospitals are bombed out and destroyed, as you might know. It's clearly injured and it's crying. It's saying, "Mama, mama, mama." And I wrote to the city council before that. It's, it makes a mother instinctively want to respond because you're hearing this every day in these videos. And this one is calling for its mom who, who has been killed by the Israeli occupation forces that are posting mocking videos of that child, it's split screen. They put on blackface and they are mocking in an exaggerated way the crying of this innocent toddler who has just lost his mom and is in clear shock, is injured and covered in blood. This is what is worse than even what Nazis did. Hitler and the Nazis really did try harder to hide the Holocaust. We have other videos are being posted by these people that hang the children's dolls to Palestinians homes that they've just violently displaced and or murdered that family. And they have written dick pics on the, in graffiti on it. And we've seen the mangled bodies of those dolls. That's reenacting the crimes. You've seen the real bodies. We see them every day.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Sarai? Sarai? She's unmuted, but I'll go to the next one. Brey Frye?
Hello? Can you hear me clearly?
We can.
All right, great. Um, hello, I was just wanting to make my voice public that I think you should make an effort, as the community has clearly shown, to divest from CalPERS. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thanks for being here. Sarah?
Hi, yes, I also just wanted to add my voice to the community members that are asking for divestment from CalPERS and also just some, some knowledge about that. I want, I want, I know that some of you, some of the city council members were interested in looking into that. And we haven't really heard any, anything further, so just, so wanting to hear more in that realm. Thank you.
Thank you. You see anyone else? Um, I still see Sarai on there. Her, her, Sarai?
Okay, I think I've done it. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, amazing, amazing. Um, hey friends, it's been a long time and I just got done working, so my brain is kind of jumbled. So go with me on this journey. I really also want to support divestment from CalPERS and also thinking about that Calsters. And there's a lot of different ways that folks are able to, you know, add their support, make sure that we're speaking up about what's going on in Palestine and really all over the world in multiple situations. And I'm noticing more and more folks are becoming more and more comfortable speaking about Palestine. I know that there was a mix up with the multicultural festival and some representation wasn't there, but even still, folks wore their flags and wore their kufiyas and were able to make a, a, a support for Palestinians known. And I'm just wanting to like uplift that sentiment and be really so happy and excited that folks are, you know, having experiences where they're forced to face what's going on. And I'm just so happy that folks are continuing to, you know, come awake with this new information and knowledge. And I just want to thank folks that have sent their divestment letters and folks who are still thinking about it. And I also want to extend this because I know that it's festival season and Reggae on the River is coming up. And I expect to see a lot of support for what's going on in Palestine there too. And I'm just wanting to really encourage the city council to preemptively encourage freedom of speech and preemptively encourage folks to show their support at festivals and at things like that. We know that Reggae on the River brings a lot of black artists up to Humboldt County. And it, it, you know, black artists often come to Humboldt County and they're often playing for crowds who maybe are not majority black. They're oftentimes majority white. And these folks love reggae and these folks are coming in a spirit of community. But having gone to reggae several times, there is still an undercurrent of privilege and undercurrent of racism. And even folks, black folks and folks of color who do make it there. I've heard stories where folks do not feel welcomed and do not feel comfortable even listening to music from their kin and from, you know, their community members. So in the same vein that I'm wanting folks to come awake and speaking about Palestine and speaking about things that are going on globally, I'm also wanting to connect that to the way that folks in this town, in this area are made to feel. As more and more people are coming awake with an understanding of solidarity for Palestine, we're continuing to come in awake, awake with solidarity with black folks, solidarity with Latino folks, solidarity with Asian folks and native folks. So I'm just wanting to like, you know, encourage the city council, maybe reach out and invite-
Thank you, Sarai. Your time's up. Thanks for being here. Are you seeing any other? Are you seeing any other?
I see no one else on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close this public comment. Which brings us to council reports, and we're going to start with Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Yeah, so we just had our last council meeting about a week ago, so I don't have a lot to report. Um I did um attend our emergency shelter ad hoc with uh our city manager um and with Councilmember Fernandez. Uh also um had an unofficial meeting um about the Gulchess and Greenway ordinance that we're going to be looking at this evening. So talked with quite a few constituents about that. That one was kind of impromptu, bumped into a whole group of people that wanted to talk with me about it. Um when I was out having breakfast, um but it um still, it's it's good. I'm glad constituents feel comfortable um coming up and approaching me and talking with me, and I had an opportunity to sit and visit with them for quite a while. So that was really actually, I really appreciated that. Uh let's see, um attended Friday night market, had some family in town visiting and um took them there and uh as tourists. And uh they really had a great time. Um had a brief chat with Chief Citro, gave me some updates on different things and how uh some of the firefighters were doing. Um some that had been recently uh injured um in one of their uh calls. And then um upcoming um on July twenty-third, uh Cal Cities is doing a coastal quarterly forum. And they'll actually have the Coastal Commission is going to be presenting as part of that, so I'm gonna, it's just over Zoom, gonna plan on attending that. Um they'll be talking about our the plans about sea level rise and uh the tools that they plan to offer as help for uh cities.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer.
Yeah, thank you. Um we had a Humboldt Bay Fire uh JPA meeting. Was it on the ninth? Or did we not? I forget. Um I'm looking at my calendar and I I'm totally spaced out on that. But um had a Cal Cities government governance committee meeting, so basically setting policy and um whatnot at the at the state level. Where uh I represent uh Northern California or coast to Northern California. And um it was a pretty uneventful week other than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um we did not have a JPA meeting on the ninth. We uh didn't have a quorum due to summer vacations. Um I was in town though. I was ready to work. Uh but I did get to go to Friday Night Market, which is absolutely bonkers. It's so packed out there. So good to see so many people, so many uh small businesses out there doing their thing. And um I'm headed to summer camp soon, so we're in full-on bake sale mode. Everything is scraping together those last scholarships that we need. Uh and I'm also looking forward to, and I talked a little bit about it um at our last meeting just seven short days ago. Uh that the mayor and I are going to be going to Ca- uh Eureka's sister city of Kamisu, Japan. Um the city of Kamisu is celebrating its twentieth anniversary of becoming an official city, the size of a city. And they are bringing, they're flying uh Mayor Begala and myself and the head of the Kamisu Sister City Project, Jay Tillman. Uh over to the Iberaki province to enjoy their celebration um for a brief couple of days. And I wish I could stay longer and get to know it. But we did have a meeting with the head of the project here um and talked about how to potentially expand that. They're doing letter writing, pen pal programs. And um one of our uh sort of short-term stretch goals in the next few years is to be sending uh students again. We have sent, we have exchanged students before for uh for tours. And we're hoping to get that um that project up and running again, so we can send some kids over there and invite some uh Kamisu youth to Eureka. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano?
Yeah, um like other council members said, it's it's only been a uh one week since we were last here. But I was able to um give a tour to the Chamber of Commerce's Leadership Redwood Coast Group of the Cultural Arts District. There's a lot of great uh folks in that group. It was really fun to share with them about the arts, culture, and tourism economy. And I, along with Supervisor Arroyo, helped facilitate the Humboldt Transit Authority strategic strategic planning session uh last Friday. So it was a good opportunity to get together with uh board members and staff for HTA. And talk about five-year plans and also uh longer-term twenty-year visions for transit in our communities. That's pretty much what I've been up to um.
Thank you. And then finally, um it has been just one week, um but I I was invited to go to the Christian Motorcycles Association breakfast. And I have to tell you, I had such a great time listening to all the things that they do in our community. And they, you know, they um they'll be at Bikes by the Bay, they do Cruising Eureka, they have a state rally coming up, they do the Crabs Night, they do the Drag Strip. They're just really involved in our community, so it was really wonderful to get to know and and to meet them. Um and what was really fun was that there were people there um that I knew thirty years ago that I haven't seen in that long. And so it was really nice to reconnect in that way as well. I also yesterday had the opportunity to go hang out down at Bayview Village, which is the new um village down the Crowley Project. Uh down at the end of Hickshary. And I'll tell you, it just is such. It was such, I can, the only word I can think of is blessing to be there um and to listen to these folks. And you know, listening to like how they were doing and like they were getting out of the shower and like, you know, they have a community kitchen and they have meetings. And Betty was down there and there were these um, the sisters from Santa Rosa were there in their full habits, which I have not seen a sister in their full habit in so many years. So that was really interesting. But when I talked to the people that were living there, one common theme came forward, one common theme. And I asked, like, how's it going? Cause you know, that's a tough transition. We may not realize it because we live in a house. But to be out on the streets for ten, fifteen, twenty, even thirty-five years and then transition into four walls and being indoors and having those parameters can be very challenging for folks. And so when I was, when I was checking in with them, um the one word that came forward with most people I talked to was it's so serene. It's so serene and so peaceful. And I I'm just so grateful that our city has the compassion and the wherewithal to look for ways to support people in our community regardless of where we come from. Regardless of where we're at and regardless of where we come from, this is the city that in the community that I live in. And I'm just so um very grateful and appreciative of that. Uh and I did go to, I met with several people and there are a lot of exciting things coming forward in the next few months that will be news at eleven, right? Those will be coming out and we'll have more information on those. And then I just wanted to say that I did go to the summer concert this last week. And the band was Incubus, which was interesting. Because I don't remember listening to Incubus, but it was great. They were, they sounded great and there were people there. But this next summer concert is called um Disturbing the Peace and it's classic rock. So if you like classic rock and you like to get your groove on, we hope to see you down there at Matikit Plaza. It's always a super fun time. And I just, looking around our community, I was, I called the city manager yesterday as I was driving home from from the village. And you know, there were all kinds of people walking around down in Old Town in shorts and tank tops and just, you know, having ice cream and just hanging out. And that's, I love the vibrancy of our city, especially this time of year. It's just really um just such a pleasure to see and to be a part of. I'm always grateful for that. So with that, we will move to the consent calendar. I can't see. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution two zero one one dash two two, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately. The request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items, and I have not had anyone come to me. So if we could get a motion to approve as written.
I'll move to approve the consent calendar as written.
I'll second. Great, so we have a motion and second. Please uh vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carries.
Thank you, and this moves us to legislative action correspondence. Do we have any of that? Councilmember Bauer? Okay. More to come. And that will move us to our Greenways um ordinances and resolutions, our Gulch and Greenway overlay zone and associated municipal code updates. And at this time, I will be recusing myself. I live close to the Greenways. So councilmem- uh excuse me, Mayor Protem Castellano will be uh filling in for me. And we are watching in the other room, just so you know, we are participating.
And I have to recuse myself as well because I live right against the Gulches. Sorry. Thank you.
Derek, can you pull up the part one?
Hi, um I'm Director Kenyon. I'll be presenting tonight. This item involves two bills, but we're going to talk about them separately. Since the first bill, uh ten forty-four, we have some recusals on. Okay. So this um section of my presentation is on ten forty-four, which adds a Gulch-Greenway overlay zone to the inland zoning map. And adds Gulch-Greenway overload overlay zone regulations to the zoning code. Um including additional permitting requirements for a subset of the overlay known as the Gulch-Greenway Management Area. Um just quickly, a timeline of how we got here. There is a policy in our twenty forty general plan to adopt these regulations. That general plan was adopted in twenty eighteen, but we had the same policy back in our nineteen ninety-seven general plan. There was an effort in twenty twenty-two to work on these, this ordinance, including a workshop survey and several open space and planning commission meetings. And then uh city council added this to their strategic vision as a two-year goal. And then we had a council study, special study session on um providing guidance on the framework for the ordinance back in October of twenty twenty-four. And then in March of twenty twenty-five, we published a draft ordinance. We mailed postcards to implicated properties. And we had an open space parks and rec commission meeting on the draft ordinance. And based on comments at that, it got updated. And then on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, after another postcard was sent out, we had a planning commission hearing. And they voted three-one with one recusal to recommend adoption with several suggested modifications. We then updated the ordinance again, and then we brought it to city council on June seventeenth for a city council hearing. And council voted three-zero with two recusals to introduce the ordinance with direction for three revisions. The revisions that were requested were adding a zoning clearance for vegetation removal required by an insurance company. Adding clarification on what we mean by wildlife-friendly fencing types and placement. And adding a definition of wield mechanized equipment. The changes that have been made to address these, this direction are shown in red line in attachment three. And I have, um so the June meeting was the introduction. This tonight is a vote on adoption, and here's a recommended motion.
Thank you, Director Kenyon, um and thank you so much for the red line version. It's, it is really helpful. And and just to say, I also appreciated some nuance you added in terms of, and then I'll open it up for councilmember questions. In terms of uh fencing that specifically delineates um uh special consideration for safety or property protection in terms of child play areas, gardens, and things like that. And also opening up just more possibilities for those tree inspections too, in terms of um or inspections. Try, I'm scrolling madly. Um the, sorry, the determination of hazardous conditions. Um so thank you for that consideration in terms of really hearing the public and including that in the revised document. Um and with that, uh opening it up for councilmember questions. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
I can't find my notes. Um there was something else that I, oh, I remember, there was something else that was brought up at the last part of the meeting. Somebody had mentioned, by the way, thank you for the red line also. Um thank you for, I know I drug that meeting on that night, asking for those things. I appreciate them being incorporated so that it makes things um more user-friendly and allows for a quicker response time for um homeowners. Somebody had mentioned, I think it was Cal Fire measures things in on a slope, um but they weren't measuring them straight out. And I was curious, um because that, by the time that was brought up, it was when we really were through the the bulk of it. And I meant to talk with you about this before then, but I was curious uh what the thought process and reasoning was behind, you know, the fire service using slope to measure the feet, but us going straight out and kind of then.
The reason we're going, uh our definition is straight out is because that is consistent with the Regional Water Quality Control Board, who are the ones that permit uh wetland fill. And um it was also what uh CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife uh wanted. So it's unfortunate that the state laws conflict with each other on that.
Is it that they conflict or is it that they have kind of like two different needs and so it's sort of like looks different on paper when it's? Cause it seems like there might be two different needs really.
Right, like fire versus protecting a wetland. And I think our regulations are more intended to protect wetlands, so.
Okay, I was expecting that to be like so much more of like a thing for me to understand that, but actually that makes a lot of sense to me, so I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions?
Oh gosh, I'm sorry. I was just rereading through it. Um I don't at the moment, so.
A comment?
I said I do not.
Oh, you do not? Okay.
Yeah, apologies.
We'll open this item, actually, sorry, it's a it's a public hearing, isn't it?
It's not a public hearing.
Okay, we will open this up for a public hearing. Um members of the public can come up. Okay, great.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you uh for being here, and I just want to clarify that slope versus horizontal protection zone. The state of uh Cal Fire does slope distance on uh wet areas, water courses, that type of thing. That is acceptable to DFW and water quality. And the state regulations basically with regard to managing timberlands and forested landscape supersede what may, what uh DFW or fishing game may require. And my comment was, is I just wanted to make sure that the Cal Fire, as I said, um has authority over the forested landscape. Uh these gulches are a forested landscape, and I was just trying to make sure that I wasn't going to get hung up on anything that where there were discrepancies between the Gulch ordinance and Cal Fire's requirements. And I am assuming that on our permitting with Cal Fire, that would supersede uh some of the ordinance requirements of the Gulch ordinance. And if it didn't, I was just concerned about harmonization of of the ordinance with uh Cal Fire and its regulations and managing the forested landscape. So thank you for that. I just wanted to clarify that statement.
Thank you.
Hello, I I'm Sue Parfit. Now, am I only supposed to talk about the slope stuff or anything to do with tin? Okay, um thank you for the the redlining. I appreciated being able to see those changes. I was concerned about some of those things. And uh the one I wanted to talk about right now though is the insurance. I was surprised by the way it was worded that it says um that vegetation removal uh when it's required by the property owner's insurance as a condition of maintaining coverage. That didn't include if someone is buying a property and they need to obtain insurance. So that seemed confusing to me. And I want to make sure that you, I mean, I expected that it was going to be covered no matter what, if you're buying a property, or like I am, I'm inheriting a property. I need to get new insurance. So it's not, I'm not maintaining the insurance, I'm obtaining new insurance. So how is that going to be covered? The other item is, has to do with the exclusion fences. I looked at a long time at this, these fences. And I have a grandchild who is an explorer. And I'm going to need to put in a fence to protect him. It won't do to have a fence around, I think you mentioned one time, a little play structure. That's not, that's not going to do the trick. It has to be, you know, off of the house and contain the backyard. I love the Gulch. I grew up there. I have no problem with making sure that animals can get through and so forth. But when I looked at the exclusion fences, it said that often they don't need to be more than four feet high. And I thought, well, yeah, no, that's not going to work in our case. They have to be higher than four feet. And so I just want to make sure that that's not going to become an issue for people who have to keep their, keep children safe. And not just safe, so that they are not running into the Gulch. That's not a good place for a child to be in, one that doesn't know how to keep themselves safe. But also to keep human trespassers out. I have a right for my property to keep it safe. And if I can't have, if a four foot is as high as it can go, I mean, we need to think about that. We're all concerned about the wildlife. But we should also be concerned about the, you know, humans that trespass, and they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Yes, please come up.
By the way, that first chime is just a 30-second warning. Sometimes people just end right then, because I think they think their time is up. So I just wanted to clarify, when you hear that, you still have 30 seconds.
Thanks for that clarification. Hi, my name is Sylvia Van Royen. I am a GIS and policy analyst for Humboldt Waterkeeper. And we've been watching the Gulches and Greenways ordinance. Jen's been watching it the whole time that it's been in development. And we're really excited that it's starting to get some new momentum. We think that city staff have done an excellent job navigating the responses from Gulch-adjacent property owners while maintaining integral protections for these urban green areas. The webpage on this ordinance has an extensive Q and A section that really helped me gain an understanding that I thought was super helpful. It cleared up a lot of questions I had after reading it. And I think that this permitting system that city staff have devised allows for development as long as it maintains the integrity of gulches and greenways. There are a range of reasonable exemptions, and the ordinance includes allowances for existing structures within gulches and greenways, which I know from the last council meeting, we heard from a lot of landowners about that. I also just wanted to note that Eureka's Gulches and Greenways already support essential ecosystem services, which will become increasingly important with climate change, especially as they are the few remaining remnants of a vast network of wetlands, streams, and sloughs that used to make up this area before it was urbanized. Gulches and greenways can reduce erosion, stabilize slopes, and trap and filter pollutants. The filtering of pollutants is especially important in urban streams now that we know about the tire wear particle 6PPD and 6PPDQ, which is extremely toxic to co-host salmon when it runs off of our pavement and into our streams. I think that the protections in this ordinance will increase the ability of Gulch habitats to absorb stream and floodwaters, which will also become increasingly severe as the climate crisis worsens. Another issue that we're going to be dealing with as an urban area because of climate change is the urban heat island effect, which basically warm temperatures during warmer times of the year are raised by urban infrastructure like pavement and buildings with dark roofs. And there's a 2021 literature review of papers on the urban heat island effect that found that cities with more urban greenery retain less heat, thus reducing the urban heat island effect. So this ordinance would also be maintaining the nice cool temperatures we have even into climate change scenarios. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else here? Yeah.
Good evening, council members. Jen Kalt with Humboldt Waterkeeper. I have been following this for a long time, but not since the 1997 general plan. I did know about that, though, and so it's really exciting that you've gotten this far and you're about to adopt this. And I'm not going to repeat everything that Sylvia just said so eloquently, but I do want to thank staff for putting together such a really good ordinance and incorporating so many concerns of people and balancing them with protecting the environment and our water quality. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience here wants to speak? Okay, anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, with that, we will close public comment, or public input on this item and bring it back to council. Councilmember Molten.
Thank you. And thank you, Kristen and staff, for the thoughtful work on this. I think our suggestions were incorporated elegantly. I am concerned about the potential blind spot of, we wanted to make sure if people's insurance company gave them a requirement that we were allowing that to happen in a timely manner. Is there anything about adding, obtaining, so obtaining or maintaining insurance? I would like to suggest that we do that. And I want to open it up to the question of whether or not that would cause a different conflict or a different problem.
I think the reasoning for, so you can still remove trees and vegetation. There's just a discretionary process for over 1,000 square feet of vegetation removal or protected trees over a certain diameter kicks you in a discretionary process. The reason for building the quicker process, the zoning clearance, I think the intent was if you're about to lose insurance, it could be a really quick process of losing the insurance. You need to bypass that discretionary review process and get that quick zoning clearance because you're about to lose insurance. I don't know if that's the same case with somebody who's trying to obtain insurance. If it's that quick of a process where you need, you need that, you need to elevate it to making it a zoning clearance and getting it approved in a matter of days instead of months. I don't know.
Remind me how long that process might take?
For the discretionary process, it could take three to six months.
Okay, so we're talking about acquiring insurance on a home that's being purchased or transferred and closing timelines. I feel like that, that still also brings up a certain timely urgency to make sure that people are able to meet those, you know, because when you're buying a house, there's all these clocks that start ticking very quickly, and you've got to get things lined up.
And so that's what the city attorney and I were discussing. And as far as if council wishes to, the addition of obtaining would not significantly change the ordinance and wouldn't require us bringing it back or anything if council chose to add that language.
So we would just add obtaining or maintaining coverage?
Unless councilmember Contreras Delush has something else.
Yeah, along the same lines, but just that edit would be a two-part edit instead of one part in that sentence. So the part where it says required by the property owner's insurance, that would turn to property slash prospective property owner's insurance. And then down on the next line, where it says maintaining, we could do maintaining or slash obtaining coverage. And so I think we could just add in those spots where we say prospective property, and then down at the bottom, maintain or obtaining. And I, would that address it? Okay.
Do we need that as a motion, or is that suggestion insufficient?
Just when you make the motion, just make that modification.
Okey-dokey. How about now?
Wait, from the motion?
Yeah, I was going to make the motion.
Okay, go ahead. But I'm going to say other stuff after that.
Okay, yeah, you can. Oh, thank you for putting it up. I have it here. I move the city council waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1044-CS and ordinance of the city of Eureka, amending Eureka Municipal Code Title 15, Chapter 155, the zoning code, to add Gulch-Greenway overlay zone regulations as 155.224.050, and amending the inland zoning map to apply the Gulch-Greenway overlay zone to various parcels within the city. And also add obtaining, obtaining insurance coverage to the section on maintaining insurance coverage. The, and prospective property owners, not, to property owners. Sorry, there's no section letters in what I'm looking at.
It's footnote 10 in.
Thank you. Okay.
Table 224-1.
Okay. Footnote 10, table 224-1. Does that make sense? Pam is nodding. I must be okay. Okay.
Would you like to second?
Yeah, I can second that. And then I have additional, okay, yeah, second. So I, based off a couple of questions that just arose really quick, really quick, just to confirm, because I remember I asked this question a lot too last time. We can, they can fence at higher than four feet.
Correct. There's the, there's two different types of wildlife-friendly fencing. If you're putting it in the Gulch and it's intended to allow wildlife passage through it, then it's got to be low. But then we're also allowing people to just fence their yard areas and play areas and where they keep pets. And that is supposed to, intended to keep wildlife out and not, it's more about keeping them from getting caught in the fence or attempting to jump over it. So actually, in that instance, you want a very high fence to keep the animals out altogether and make sure they don't attempt to jump and then get hurt.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. So if somebody wants to fence the entirety of their property, they can put a six-foot fence, so long as it's not the kind that animals can get stuck in.
The, how it reads, well, first we referenced these guidelines that talk about it. You, ideally, when you're dealing with a wildlife corridor, you don't want fencing that blocks wildlife. But we say exclusion fencing may be considered wildlife-friendly only if it is limited to areas needed for safety or property protection. For instance, child play areas, gardens, animal closures, cited to preserve habitat connectivity and migration routes, and designed to avoid risk of entanglement and injury. For instance, no decorative spikes or barbs on the top rail and narrow or no gaps between slats to prevent wildlife from attempting to squeeze through. So if, and this is not saying you can't have other fencing, this is how you get a zoning clearance where we just approve it in a day, you know, without asking you, asking for more of an analysis of its potential impact and then having a hearing about it.
No, I just wanted to make sure that we aren't somehow determining what we think is an appropriate amount of play area for someone's yard. And that we are allowing people to determine that themselves on what is an appropriate amount of play area for their yard.
Yeah, I think it comes down to the part about, you know, you still have to leave an area open at the bottom of the Gulch for wildlife to get through. So if you're gonna.
How much of an area?
I mean, you don't need much of an area to allow a bear through, right? You just need something.
I'm just wondering what the objective measurement is. And is this, or is it going to be, people are going to go out and eyeball it and kind of?
If, you know, this is going to be a determination whether or not you meet the standard. And if it's getting too complicated, then we're going to have to say, hey, you need to go through the discretionary process because it's looking like you're completely blocking this corridor from wildlife movement because you're wanting to fence your entire property. But if you're just fencing, like, most people just want to fence their yard area above the break-in slope. That's where they, and that's totally fine, you know, it's just when you get down to the stream corridor where you're going to be blocking wildlife movement.
So I, okay, so I used to back up to the golf course, but I had a big gully-ish thing before it reached the golf course. And some of my neighbors had theirs open, and some of them had it fenced, but none of us had it fenced up at the top of the yard. It was down a ways. And so I guess that's what I'm trying to, I feel like if I can't explain that off the top of my head, I'm just wondering, is it clear and is it an objective standard, or are we having this kind of like, we're going to eyeball it thing?
It's going to be something that if it's not obvious that it's not blocking wildlife, then I'm going to have to bring CDFW in to help me make the determination.
How much space do you guys think that you need at the, you know, is it going to be based off of the slope or a certain ways down the slope? Does it need to be five feet? Does it need to be 10 feet?
Do you want to maybe ask CDFW staff that are here?
Sure. Would you all mind coming up and just speaking to how those, your process around those determinations?
Yeah, and I apologize. For some reason, I thought I understood this, but I'm realizing that what I thought I understood the last meeting is not what I thought it was. So that's why I'm asking for clarification.
So I think Mike Van Haddam, Cal Fish and Wildlife, I hope you can hear me. I think what we're, what we're mostly looking after here is just straight up blocking wildlife movement. As the, as the gulches go to the ocean or go to the bay, you know, it's really about somebody putting a fence. Well, they have to have a parcel that allows it first to actually fence across. That's what we're fundamentally trying to avoid. And that's a standard SEQA thing, and it's something we've considered in environmental impact for a really long time. I think what's in there is a good attempt at trying to define these things. I don't think anyone's looking to regulate somebody's fence in their immediate backyard. It's really about blocking the Gulch. So that's, that's how I see it. You asked a specific question.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I agree. The intent here is, obviously, it's a good intent. But I just, I don't really like things to be hazy. So I'm wondering, like, is it five feet? Is it 10 feet? Is it 15? Is it, you know, like, what are, what amount are we going to reasonably say is needed for someone to not include as part of their yard if they're fencing it? Because when you put up the fence, it's effectively no longer really your yard area.
Yeah, I think it's hard because it's really a site-specific call. So, you know, if you, if you're going to get down into wetlands and creeks to fence, that's problematic. If you're up and high and dry and it's usable space, I think that's a totally different thing. So that's kind of how I think about it.
No, I appreciate that. It's just really vague. You know, it's, like, I don't, I don't back up to anything now. I'm in the middle of town. But I think that this would concern me a little bit to just kind of have it be vague. You know, so is dry the standard? Because it's only dry during sometimes the year, right? And then other times of the year, based off of rain, we wouldn't, that would be kind of harder to determine.
That's why I would recommend fencing to be a discretionary thing, because it is really context-specific how it's going to impact wildlife. But the way to get around it being discretionary is to, for us to, you know, we get a zoning clearance request for a fence, and we go on a site visit with us and CDFW, and we, you know, we wait, we let the experts make the call on whether it's going to be a potential impact or not.
Okay. And I apologize, I don't, you know, it's kind of a lot going on in the document. What was the length of time for that?
For a zoning clearance?
Yeah, for a fence.
If we're gonna, if it's not clear that it's wildlife-friendly and I need to call in CDFW for a site visit, it's going to depend on how long that takes. They are, and I've been through three different people now in terms of the person at CDFW who's in charge of our referrals, and they've all been super quick in being able to schedule within that week or the next week for site visits because their office is in Eureka, and they'll come out with me at lunchtime or whenever.
Often the day of.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Okay, I'm satisfied that it's, that we have some that'll be obvious, and that will be helpful with the way that this is written. And the other ones that are not obvious is something you guys can take care of pretty quickly. Okay, thank you. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, anytime. Any other questions?
I have one last one. Is that okay?
Sure.
So also in the red line one, under C, determination of hazardous conditions, and we talk about, there's an outline of the different ways. I'm assuming under B, where it says are met, may be made by the Eureka Policy Department. We're talking police department, right? It's just a typo?
Yeah, that's a typo. Thank you for pointing that out.
I just was like, I'm going to.
This is the second bill, so that, this, this is for the tree removal is in the second bill.
Okay. Oh, am I in the wrong spot? I am.
It's coming next. Yeah, I, sorry, I put both red lines together, which makes it confusing.
Okay, so then I, I'll wait on that next one. Okay, so then I, I'll wait on that next one, okay, that was it.
And I also just wanted to bring up that like, it is really hard to write regulations that apply to the environment. And so what's nice about this is it's the inland zoning code, which we have a goal of uh um cleaning up and updating every year. So as we apply it and we realize what's wrong with it, we can quickly come to you with amendments to fix it up. Thanks.
There we go, uh and I do thank you for kind of threading the needle in terms of how to make something that, you know, the public can use and access. While also uh creating a regulation that meets the variables of the environment. And it's, it was interesting when, when you're, for me, when, when we were talking about, you know, like, sort of like, what's neutrality? Or or what's easy to understand, when, when really we could, we could also imagine that, you know, the the watersheds, which have been here since. You know, before property lines, actually perhaps are a more base level neutrality. In terms of, you know, the way the land is composed and the way people could relate to the land and that, you know, the way that uh perhaps we've. Interpreted measurements as, as a neutral space actually is less than neutral. And so, you know, I think that there's an interesting way of kind of re- reimagining what we think of as uh. How, how we orient a land and and ordinances around land, so I really appreciate the the discussion around that. Um were there any more questions or comments from council members? Okay, uh ready to vote, uh please vote.
Three yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez and Councilmember Bauer, absent motion carries.
Thank you, and I do believe that Mayor Bregal will be returning here. So uh thank you everyone for coming out and for giving input on this item. Uh and also just thank you for, everyone for your persistence on this. It's really been interesting to to be here in this moment when, when this has had such a long history with the city of Eureka.
And we still have the second bill, just reminder.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And I would say that it's four minutes till eight, which is generally our break time. Uh so I'm not sure how everybody's feeling. All right, so we're gonna take a break until eight oh six, ten minutes.
Most importantly, our tree removal and landscaping requirements that are in one, chapter one fifty-five inland zoning code. And they apply to all properties in the inland area of the city. And then our grading um section, which is in chapter one fifty, the building code. Which is about when you need an erosion and sediment control permit for construction. So on June seventeenth, the council voted five zero to introduce this bill with direction for two revisions. Revision one was to add a provision to authorize city staff to determine if a tree is hazardous. And number two was to add a provision allowing tree removal required by an insurance company with a zoning clearance. So the changes are shown in red line in attachment three. And um the bill that, ten forty-four that just got a um adopted. We made a change about the zoning clearance applying to both um. Losing existing coverage or failing, not being able to obtain new coverage. So I just wanna note that we, uh you might wanna make a s- parallel change in the tree removal section. And that's it for me, and here's the recommended motion when you're ready.
Great, do we have questions for Director Kenyon? Councilmember Contra Staloch?
Should I ask it exactly the same way? So um, okay, so it's Eureka Police Department, so we can fix that typo. My question was, uh and it may not be for you, Director Kenyon, this might be for city manager, I'm not exactly sure. I just wanted to ask really quick, um since this is specifically for an emergency type of situation. Um and it says they can contact uh Eureka Police Department, Humboldt Bay Fire Department. Uh is that mainline or is that nine one one, hey, my tree's about to fall over?
Uh just non- non-emergency dispatch, now if it is falling over. You maybe, you know, fell over and somebody gets injured, obviously it's probably a nine one one, but yeah, you could call non-emergency dispatch. I think four four one forty sixty, Lenny? Four seven four four? Oh, four zero four four.
Okay.
I was close.
My next question that was attached to that one is, um so it'd be the non-emergency dispatch number. So my next question would be, um how will we inform the public that that's what we want them to do in case of this type of an emergency?
Uh, I mean, we could, I mean, when we do out, we've, didn't do any outreach related to this, right? As far as, I mean, we did a lot of outreach.
I think we, yeah, we should definitely get some, we can get a webpage on our website about tree removal. And um explain, and we can put hazardous trees at the very top of it, what do I do?
Yeah, and we could put that um forward that on, EPD has their own website and uh HBF obviously has there. And so we could forward that link to them to have it on their webpage as well.
Okay, that was my questions, thank you.
Councilmember Moulton?
I just had a suggestion on that mechanism to do some outreach with um local tree um trimmers, surgeons, folks. Cause there's a small crew of them.
Yeah.
You know, small group, you could tell them what the law is saying.
Yeah, and I could probably look back at all of our recent tree permits and pull up all their contact info and send out a blast.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up to the public, is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item, bill two? Seeing no one in chambers, we'll bring it over to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion in a second and then comments.
I can make a motion, if you, do you have a motion for me? Can I read one? And this has, it has mirror language on the, um, okay, I'm gonna add it like we did last time. Uh recommended motion, I move the city council waive full reading, read by title only and adopt bill number ten forty-five uh CS. An ordinance of the city of Eureka, many in Eureka Municipal Code, Title fifteen, chapters one fifty, the building code and one fifty-five, the zoning code. Pertaining to construction, site erosion control, uh one fifty, are we just saying dot two hundred? How does that said? Dot, okay, zoning districts and maps, one fifty-five dot one sixteen, tree removal, one fifty-five dot three oh four dot one forty. Landscaping, one fifty-five dot three twenty-eight, administrative responsibilities, one fifty-five dot four oh four. Specific permits and approvals, one fifty-five dot four one two, and defined terms, one fifty-five five oh eight. And then adding, uh Kristen, I don't know what section that's in.
In table three oh four dash one, footnote four.
Need to say it or is it okay that you just said it? Footnote four.
I'm sorry, say again.
Do I need to repeat what Kristen just said or is it okay that she said it?
No, I, you can just adopt what she said.
So four, um so that language would be changed to a protected tree may be removed or altered with zoning clearance. When required by the property or prospective property owner's insurance company as a condition of maintaining or obtaining. Coverage based on evidence of the requirement.
We have a motion?
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second, are there any comments? Seeing none, please vote.
Four yes votes, Councilmember Fernandez, absent motion carries.
Thank you, and with that, we will move to report and action items. City of Eureka twenty twenty-five communication plan with Economic Development Manager, Esberry.
Can we just all appreciate this picture for a second, cause it's so good? All right, good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight to present the city of Eureka's twenty twenty-five communications plan. Um so this has been a priority in our strategic visioning conversations and we're excited to bring it forward. In the past, the city's communications were split, Eddie Alexander handled tourism marketing while individual departments managed their own messaging. With the expansion of the Economic Development Division to include communications, we now have the structure and staffing to unify our messaging. Under one coordinated approach. So this plan builds on the foundation that Eddie Alexander helped establish. It aligns with our existing city policies like our updated social media policy. And it was shaped with input from departments, especially community services. And it's designed to bring clarity and consistency to how we share information, serve the public, support local businesses and engage visitors. And as a living document, it's gonna continue to evolve with us. So tonight, I'm gonna walk you through the core elements of the plan, including revisit Eureka tourism efforts and share how we're already putting this plan into action. So why a communications plan? Um as we transitioned communications in-house, we needed a shared framework that brought departments together and gave us a structure for change. And this plan does that, it helps us align messaging across departments. It helps us build trust through increased outreach and information sharing and enhances how we connect with the public, whether through city services, tourism. Or community engagement efforts. Ultimately, it's gonna help us speak with one voice and better serve the people of Eureka. So at its core, the communications plan is about making sure people feel informed, heard and connected to their local government. We have five goals, the first one is transparency and timely information. We want our residents to be able to access accurate updates when it matters. We also want stronger engagement and civic pride, so through public input, storytelling and celebrating what makes Eureka unique. When we met with each of you during our two by twos, a common theme emerged, you want us to highlight the people and projects happening behind the scenes. We all have a front row seat to who's doing what internally and we wanna get better at sharing that more broadly. We also want support for economic development and tourism, using communication tools to promote businesses, events and the Visit Eureka brand. And then internal coordination and brand consistency, so no matter the platform or department, our messaging feels cohesive and trustworthy. So we identified five core audiences, the first one is our residents, they rely on us for timely and clear updates. Also businesses and organizations who need resources and support, visitors and tourists are gonna be reached primarily through Visit Eureka. Media outlets who help us amplify our message and then internal stakeholders, staff, elected officials such as yourself, commissioners. Who need shared tools and alignment. So across all audiences, our key messages reflect that we're open and responsive and accessible and that we're here to serve Eureka. So to meet the needs of diverse audiences, we're gonna be using a range of tools. The very first one is our city website, so it is the hub of all information. And then everything, all of our other communication tools like social media, A's newsletter, the signage, everything is gonna be like a spoke going back to the website. So the website is gonna be where everything is housed and then everything builds off of that, so it goes back to the website. Talk Eureka also adds interactive features to encourage engagement and community input. Social media and our A newsletter are gonna be providing ongoing communication. The Eureka Alert delivers real time emergency updates. And then we'll continue with our in-person engagement such as flyers and um signage and community events. So each channel plays a different role, but together they ensure information is timely, clear and accessible. So social media, it's one of our most visible tools, um but right now the city operates fifteen separate Facebook pages. Um so that fractures and dilutes our messaging. Some of them really make sense, it makes sense that Little Saplings has its own Facebook page, cause it is the parents and the staff talking about the kids. Or this zoo should totally have its own Facebook page and it is excellent, it's some of our best content and is delightful for anybody who isn't following it. They should follow it, makes sense for Eureka Police Department to have their own Facebook page, they have a different kind of message, especially when it comes to emergencies. Um but we're gonna be working on consolidating and coordinating, coordinating these under a more unified structure. We're not trying to limit departments, we just wanna ensure that the public can find information easily and consistently. So we've also updated our social media policy and we're implementing consistent use of logos, colors, fonts and tone. Guided by our city's brand guideline book, so that no matter where we are, how someone interacts with the city, it always feels cohesive and professional. We're gonna be measuring our progress, we're gonna be tracking our digital engagement, like our website visits, A newsletter performance and social media analytics. Community feedback and participation at meetings and events through surveys and public comment. Media coverage and press reach, internal use of tools and templates. And our Visit Eureka marketing impact, including website traffic, social media growth and welcome center activity. So this is a new frontier for us, but we're committed to learning and adjusting and growing over time. The role of the Communications Division is here to support all of our departments, we wanna help promote projects, events and programs. We're gonna be managing the city's main website and social media, coordinating with the media and during emergencies, upholding brand standards. And overseeing all Visit Eureka tourism marketing. So our goal is to make communication easier, clearer and more effective, so departments can focus on what they're doing and serving the public. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Emily Kirsch, who's gonna walk us through our Visit Eureka tourism efforts.
There's a button there. Hello.
Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, I wanted to give you a quick update on the city of Eureka's tourism marketing. Specifically how our Visit Eureka social media channels are performing and some exciting progress we've made on the digital side. Over the past six months from mid-December through early July, we've seen major growth across both Facebook and Instagram. On Facebook, we reached over three hundred and twenty-five thousand people and have had more than one million video views. With organic, consistent and engaging content. We also saw over seventeen thousand interactions, which is up more than seven hundred and seventy-five percent from the same time last year. We added more than twelve hundred new followers and our page visits more than doubled. Posts visiting, featuring the redwoods, the waterfront, local events and seasonal highlights really stood out, those were some of the most popular and most shared. Instagram is seeing really great momentum too, we had almost two hundred thousand views with engagement more than doubling year over year. We added over eight hundred new followers and increased how often we post, six time more, six times more than the same period last year. So we're not just reaching more people, we're showing up more consistently to really tell a stronger story about Eureka. On this slide, you can see a few graphics that demonstrate that growth visually, including content performance for both platforms. Another big win this year has been our ongoing collaboration with Visit California. We've been regularly sharing our organic content with their team and they've been reposting it through their California Welcome Center social media channel. So you can see two examples of those posts there, the Forest Moon Festival and Kinetic Sculpture. This has helped us reach an even broader audience and has really amplified the work that we're doing to promote Eureka as a destination. And finally, we're close to relaunching the visit eureka dot com website with a refreshed look and structure. The website is designed to be a resource of everything that makes Eureka great, including local shops, restaurants, businesses. And all of our historical, cultural, natural and artistic assets. With the relaunch of the Visit Eureka website, we're expanding our content strategy to include a steady stream of new material. So blogs, itineraries and event features that will tie directly into our social media. This gives us even more ways to share what makes Eureka special and to spotlight our local businesses, attractions and community events. All of this helps us strengthen Eureka's presence as a destination, support our local economy. And continue building a brand that reflects the energy, beauty and creativity of the city, thanks so much.
Um so what's next, um implementation, it's already started, we're gonna um be updating our templates and tools for staff. We're in the process of hiring a new communications project manager. After our new person is onboarded, then we'll be meeting with each department to better understand their communication needs. And uh we are also gonna be working on consolidating the social media. So we're gonna continue to evaluate, refine and support staff through this rollout. This plan gives us the tools to keep our residents informed, connected and proud of their city, helps us share Eureka's story. Thank you for your time tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions and I have some suggested motion language prepared. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I have some suggested motion language prepared should you wish to adopt the plan this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I was curious. Well, first, thank you. Strategic visioning, when I was just brand new in whatever, I think it was February twenty twenty-three. This was one of the things that I really wanted, was for there to be a cohesive communications instead of people having to go to think, to type in all these different Facebook pages or whatever to kind of find out what's going on. So I am, and like you said, it makes sense, obviously, that some of them need to have their own, but so much of it, it was just, it would be so great to have it one spot. I was curious, are they going to, will it kind of have like a subheading that it's like, this one is for this department or whatever? Like, so will the post still kind of delineate which department that it's in?
Definitely, and we'll also be including like a lot of information in the caption, so that it's ADA and we want to tie everything together in the captions. So I think we're getting better at that, getting the hang of the captions and how to include more information in that. And we want to make sure that the departments are getting shared, that all the projects are getting shared equally. And so that is going to be part of the structure and the scheduling of the posts and what's going out and when, things like that.
Would that be challenging based off of just some departments are a lot more project-heavy than others, or is that?
Definitely. It's not going to be a requirement. It's going to be based on the projects and just making sure everybody's getting promoted and that. Everything that's happening is getting shared.
And then I was curious if there's any kind of, this may be a just kind of off-the-wall question, any consideration of there being like an app or something else that people could? I don't know what even goes into that, but I'm curious if there would be something where we could do an app so that people could, do we already have something like that? For City of Eureka where it kind of allows them to access things easier and they can see that kind of?
I think there's a lot of app fatigue as far as like, oh, I don't want to download another app. So yeah, that gets us back to the website. I think having the core of our contents on the website and people can go there and easily navigate it and get to what they're looking for. And then social media will be highlighting those things, and the newsletter will be highlighting those things. But if they really want to know things, then they would go back to the website.
And as a FYI, our website is also going to be refreshed. And we currently have responsive design for the website on mobile devices. Over fifty percent of our residents or people using our website use it on a tablet or a phone. So we are putting extra care into the presentation of our website on those mobile devices. And also, within the website, you can sign up for alerts. You can take a picture of a pothole and report it. You can do those things now. But as we improve, it will be easier.
Okay, thanks. I really appreciate it.
Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you, and thank you for the report. One thing, as I was looking over it, I was curious about, you know, different types of communication flows that might be needed for different audiences and/or different situations, such as emergency, you know, emergency or kind of critical issue versus, you know, sort of like an update on a city event. Could you speak a little bit more to that and maybe how you'll be training staff around those different flows?
Definitely. So we talked a little bit about the flow of information in the plan. But when we're meeting with each department, we do want to outline those processes and really get, like, focus on crisis communication first and foremost. Figure out what emergencies we can kind of plan ahead for and create structures and plans for that, so that when those things happen, everybody knows what to do. And there's going to be times where that's not our team. That's going to be EPD leading or Humboldt Bay Fire leading. And so just having it mapped out so everybody knows what to do and when. That'll be part of the process, the flowchart process.
Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, and thank you for all the work that goes into this. I remember at my first strategic visioning, even further back than Councilmember Contreras Deloche, we were talking about how the City of Eureka is great at doing a lot of really, really good stuff, but not as good at letting people know what we're doing. So I just had a question about the communications project manager, so that's the title. This person be, so some folks are very good at getting the word out, communication about what they're doing is part of the mission, parks and rec, things like that. Will this person be going then to departments that are less communicative and showing off their work? So wastewater treatment or things like that? Can you elaborate on that just a little bit?
Yeah, and we have a couple of campaign ideas in mind, like an infrastructure minute. That's, you know, we provide infrastructure. And so going and showing short videos about what's going on at wastewater, I think people would be really into. Definitely, this person is going to be building relationships with each department, not just the department heads, but the staff that are working on the projects. So that we can like, plan a pipeline ahead of time of what's coming on and what we can do to promote those leading up to it. So it's not just the last-minute promotion that we can really build, communicating about what's happening in each department.
I think it's a great idea, and the consistent comment, the consistent content coming out can really give the public, especially if it's in something like shorts or something that's going to get delivered in a just a really digestible way through social media, that's going to give people a much better sense of what their city government does. Because there's so much going on on the day today, so much fascinating work and infrastructure and cool pictures. I look forward to seeing it all.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, with that, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will bring it back to council for a motion and a second, and then comments. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll make a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five communications plan.
Second. Great. So we have a motion and a second. Any comments?
Yeah, just one last thing. I want to thank you for, staff for the great job. You all done with this. It was really fun talking about it. It's not my forte, you know, doing what you all do. But I trust you doing a great job, and I look forward to seeing us move this forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Thank you. As Councilmember Bauer mentioned, and to Councilmember Moulton's point, I do think this capacity for people to find a way, and Councilmember Contreras Deloche also, for people to orient and have a more cohesive way of understanding what's happening in the city will be really valuable for, you know, for all of the different audiences you mentioned. So I'm excited to see it put into work.
I too am excited about the opportunity for our community to be more involved. You know, it's really easy to just click on your phone and see a snippet and say, oh, that's kind of cool. I'm going to go check that out, or I'm going to go check that. So it's wonderful that we're becoming more and more savvy with those kinds of things. So with that, if there are no further comments, please vote.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Fernandez absent. Motion carries.
Great pictures, too. All right, this moves us to the construction phase one GMP for Eureka Operations Complex with Special Project Manager Marcelon.
Good evening. I'm Katie Marcelon. I work with our engineering department, and we're going to talk about the Eureka Operations Complex. Just as a reminder, we are moving this project forward, and at each increment of the project, the city council has provided some sort of either contract authorization or we've done a status report with budget allocation. So this is coming back to you for that next check-in and the next milestone in the project. Our project site is at three nine nine three Broadway, off Highway one oh one, right behind Pacific Motorsports, in an upland location outside of the coastal zone and other hazard areas. And we've been moving this project through its milestones with the November twenty twenty-three moving into acquisition phase and closing escrow in May of twenty twenty-four. And then just a reminder of why are we doing this? We have, the city's had a longstanding goal to relocate our Public Works Corporation Yard facility. We're currently working out of the site at West Fourteenth Street next to Costco. And this new site will serve not only as the corporation yard, but also function as the city's emergency operations center during critical incidents. So just recap the background. Council did provide action and approval of the acquisition, the sequa, the adoption of the initial, let's see if I can do it, initial study mitigated negative declaration. And also at that time, gave staff direction to move in the schematic design phase and also pursue the procurement of a construction manager at risk. In September of twenty twenty-four, council took action and approval to then award a contract for that construction manager at risk to Swinerton Builders. This is a slide I've shared before that was just a visual to help us walk through the steps to get to construction. So this is a great way to see our checklist of what we've accomplished. We did complete our procurement step, our schematic design step, and our project budgeting, and we're moving into our final design, and now tonight, potentially, our GMP contract award. And as a reminder, what a construction manager at risk is, this is a unique delivery method for a construction project like this, something of this scale. We went through a procurement process, RFQ, RFP. We then work with that contractor through a pre-construction stage. They give us design input, and they're engaging with us through that work. Then we reach that hundred percent design. We try to acquire this guaranteed maximum price. The city can then award or terminate and bid it through other means. And then if we do award that GMP, that CM at risk carries the financial liability to deliver the project within the GMP. So this delivery method was chosen to reduce the delivery time, enhance the design quality. We actually have those conversations about the materials, the methods, how the contractor might construct. That's rolled into our design documents so that we can have greater cost certainty and hopefully reduce change orders in any uncertain situations during construction. So we've hit our final two arrows here, final design and GMP contract award. These are the steps we've completed recently, source schematic design, November through January of twenty twenty-five. We moved into design development and into the production of the construction documents between February and June of twenty twenty-five. And now the contractor has proposed a guaranteed maximum price, and we returned to city council for award. We are also concurrently working on the pre-construction phases for Phase Two, which is our upright buildings and the complete project build-out. That whole team is working towards those construction documents, and we would come back to you at a future time for the Phase Two. This is a fun, pretty picture to share for the night. Earlier, you know, design iterations, we were really at that schematic or design development level. Now we're in a construction document set, and we can produce these three D renderings. So we are proposing a two-stage construction, a season in twenty twenty-five and then another season in twenty twenty-six. So we won't see many of these pretty things yet. But the site work includes everything that goes underground to get us to this site. Right now, this is a grassy hillside, and so the site work includes bringing all new utilities. So new storm drain infrastructure, new water, sewer, electrical. These brown areas, if you can see these, this is a stormwater collection and retention basin. There's another one on the north side of the property, so they're quite large, even larger than some of our structures. So it's a very well-designed site with circulation coming into the site and allowing to go all the way out on the north end. We do have a facility here that's our decant facility where any of our wet materials that come in from our VAT con trucks can be unloaded. Solids are separated from liquids, and then that goes into a sanitary sewer system. So that's kind of offloading of wet material. On the far property end is our bulk materials for dry material storage. So we're creating a path for our truck traffic to come in and load or unload. And then also, all the operations in and out throughout today for our fleet maintenance operations, our sewer, water, and streets crews coming in and out of the facility throughout the day. So that means for getting us into construction of these facilities, the site development, as I mentioned, grading, underground utilities, utility connections, portions of hardscape, perimeter fencing would be constructed during the dry season of twenty twenty-five. Swinerton Builders went ahead and conducted their subcontractor bidding. They prepared that GMP proposal to staff. We received that proposal about the first week of May. So we've been in, I would say, a good six to eight weeks that we've been trying to push numbers around to get us to a final GMP to bring to council. Their first submittal was for eight million one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, and we've reduced that to almost five hundred thousand dollars. And I believe we're going to push it a little bit lower. So what staff is asking for council's authorization is a not-to-exceed amount for the GMP. If council makes that approval tonight, we would then continue to work with them. I think we can get it down to about a seven point five. And then we'd be issuing a notice of acceptance and moving into construction contracts. So that's one portion of the action recommended for tonight. That dollar amount does include slightly more than what we might have considered for Phase One. We were not going to bring in the perimeter fencing until the end of the project, for example. And that's just one item, but it made sense. Why would we pay for construction fencing for a year or two when we could build some of that perimeter fencing now? So we were looking at ways, maybe we might be spending that money a little bit sooner, but it saves us in terms of sequence and implementation and trade-off for costs. And here's another view from the north looking towards the facility. So one other piece of your action tonight is requesting a not-to-exceed amount for supplemental pre-construction services for Phase Two. So baseline pre-construction services include a lot of the cost estimating components. Swinerton Builders is already retrained to provide pre-construction services for Phase Two for the buildings and the structures. And that includes cost estimating all those trades, which might be mechanical, plumbing, electrical, you know, the HVAC systems, the roof systems, all the wall assemblies. So there's a lot of work that they've already committed to and are immersed in. We're recommending adding supplemental services to that. That's going to include design engagement for our generator, our main service procurement, and then also our metal building, design only. So these are not construction services. These would be engagement services, and these would be funds that our project may have spent with our architecture team. But we see an advantage to have the contractor working directly with electric, you know, installation companies, directly with those electric submittal firms, working with manufacturers instead of being on the electrical engineer design side. So we see a balance of spending some fee with the architect, but also spending some of these project dollars with the contractor for the pre-construction portion of this. On the metal building side, there's a design component for a structure like this. In any architectural set, you're going to have your foundations, your footings, your structure, your framing. But for the metal facility itself, it has to be pre-engineered by that manufacturer. So we would be engaging with that company. Doing that in a strategic way would allow us to not have changes to the design. So we don't want the architect to take the design too far. We want to have that metal building company as a partner to us. And then they actually charge a fee. It might be fifty thousand dollars for the design of the structure, that engineered structure. And then that folds into our building set and our document set. So this supplemental pre-construction services would cover that type of work and be folded into the sequence and tasks that are already, we're already engaged for. So those are some of the major items. As I mentioned, this is a GMP contract award just for Phase One for site work. The next steps, what we're asking for tonight were approval to move us into construction phase. So if we're, if we're ready to do this leap and this milestone tonight, the contractor would move into construction phase. They would also have Phase Two supplemental services. The architect would also, we're asking for a third action item, have budget available for the construction administration services and the continued design support. And then we're already, have retained them for these other ongoing tasks that bring us forward through Phase Two. So those are some of the highlights of the next steps. There are a lot of pieces to the recommended action. As I mentioned, they all fold together. So we highlighted the GMP not-to-exceed amount, a supplemental not-to-exceed amount, and then the architectures not-to-exceed amount. And then authorizing our city engineer to be able to sign all these documents, and then the budget allocation that's a part of this. I didn't highlight it, but your council took action in June on the financing funds that are supporting this project. So this is not new money. We just want to make sure that this dollar amount is in this account, and it's being brought from those financed funds that were approved in June. We just want to make sure that this dollar amount is in this account and it's being brought from those financed funds that were approved in June. So those are the end of my updates.
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Bauer?
Great, great report. I know we talked about solar in the future and in building design is all takes that into account, right? Solar, battery, all that.
I was waiting for you to ask very specifics, but we did increase our transformer service. We're currently working with PG&E right now. We have another timeline with them coming up next week for design. We increased from a sixteen hundred amp service up to a two thousand amp service to allow for our EV fleet to, as we transition over time. And then our building, the actual positioning of our building allows us to have great exposure for solar. So for the purpose of this, getting the project built and getting us occupied, we will have kind of a minimum PV requirement for Title twenty four. So we will have some photovoltaic solar on the building, but we won't be covering the whole building yet until I can afford it or get a cool grant.
Thank you.
So I just have a quick question, just for a clarification question. So with the guaranteed maximum price, that means that there will be no change orders. It's just everything will be done under that specific price.
That's correct. We do have what's called an owner contingency and it's a very low threshold. So if we choose something that's owner-directed and we say, hey, you're out there doing this work. We really want you to do this additional piece. We, we provide a contingency for that. So that would be the one component. But their, their function is to have vetted all these documents and try to ask as many questions as possible. So that if there is something that occurs, it, there's a sense of responsibility and investment and ownership that they need to problem solve it and work it out with the budget they have.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions, we will open this item to public comment. Is there anyone in chambers who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it over to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a second and comments. Councilmember Castellano?
I move to authorize seven million, six hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars as the not to exceed amount to Swinerton Builders for the guaranteed maximum price, contract for phase one construction services and available contingency for development of the Eureka Operations Complex number two thousand and twenty four dash nineteen. And authorize two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars not to exceed to Swinerton Builders for supplemental pre-construction services for phase two. And authorize three hundred and twenty four thousand dollars not to exceed to Scott Edwards Architecture to perform construction administration services for phase one. And continued design services and authorize city engineer to negotiate and execute applicable contract documents and authorize budget allocation the amount of eight million, two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars to account two four zero four seven zero zero seven zero two four.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further comments? Seeing no one, please vote.
Four yes votes, councilmember Fernandez absent, motion carried.
Thank you. So this moves us to future agenda items. Does anybody have any future agenda items? Okay, seeing none. I just did want to clarify that we are, for the public commenters earlier, we are working on a time certain date for the PERS meeting. We haven't set that date yet. We've been having some conflicts with different council schedules, but we will certainly let you know as soon as that is, those dates are available. And so that moves us to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Tonight we have a report from Chief Stevens to give an update on some of our statistics from EPD. So welcome, Chief Stevens.
Good evening, city manager, mayor and council. It's a pleasure to be here. As next week is our quarterly cop board meeting, we're starting to put together our report for that meeting. As a part of that, we've done our stats for the quarter of April through June, two thousand and twenty five and compared those to the same quarter from last year. And we found some significant outcomes that we wanted to share both with the cop board and with council tonight. So is there a clicker, Pam? So starting with dispatch, we've seen a decrease of ten percent in our nine one one calls into our center. As well as a ten percent decrease in the overall non-emergency calls into our center. And I'm starting off with this slide because it kind of correlates, we believe, to some of the other decreases in calls for service that we've seen on the patrol side. So our field activity calls for service is down six percent. So we're roughly just under twelve thousand for this quarter for two thousand and twenty five. These are the VIC numbers right here. Commander LaFrance took over patrol in January. Commander Rabang moved to CSAT to our special teams. And we, they developed and I supported their wanting to move forward with more proactivity within our department. So coming out of COVID, coming out of staffing issues, we still have staffing issues, but coming out of COVID, really we got into a mindset that we became more reactive than proactive towards certain things. So with some change this year, we've seen a real increase in the officer initiated activity. It's up ninety five percent for this quarter alone. Our traffic stops are up two hundred and ninety two percent. We really have made a focus on traffic stops being important as they play a vital role, not only in our traffic enforcement side of the house, but they also lead to multiple other types of investigations for our patrol officers to dive deep into because they're stopping people and finding different things on those stops. So we're seeing an increase in our traffic stops. And our bike pet stops are up eight hundred and thirty three percent as well. So our total cases is only up two percent for compared to this time last year. Our felony arrests are up two percent. And our misdemeanor arrests are down nine percent. We in June of two thousand and twenty five, we went live with online reporting capabilities within our department. So you can report a particular set of crimes, tips, anonymous information online. Since that went live in June, we've had forty three submissions to our online portal. There were thirty one different incidents that were reported. Three of those were assigned to some type of follow-up. So there was something in that that allowed us to call the reporting party back, conduct an investigation or at least see if there was further we needed to do to conduct an investigation into what was reported to us. And just as a reference, nine calls or nine submissions were actually out of our jurisdiction. So we sent those back to the person reporting them, letting them know that this is not a Eureka problem, was most likely a county problem. So this is where we really have seen. This is where the enforcement, the traffic stop and the, yeah, traffic law enforcement has really come into play. Our collisions overall are down fourteen percent. Our criminal collisions are up thirty five percent and criminal collisions are identified as hit and runs, whether there are suspects identified or just unknowns. And then our DUI collisions are up. However, our traffic stops are up two hundred and ninety two percent for this quarter. Our DUI arrests are up sixty nine percent. So we're still addressing the DUIs that are out there, even though we're seeing more traffic collisions on the criminal side. We are doing what we can to address those issues as heavily as we can. And we've written four hundred and eleven citations this quarter, which is up one hundred and thirty six percent. I, I will just say that I don't believe citations being issued has a direct effect on a lot of things. I think it's the overall traffic enforcement. It's being out there creates a deterrence that we see the change. And I can tell you, even this morning, picking up my coffee, Ramones had a citizen tell me just they appreciate seeing the more units out on the street. And the enforcement actions are taking, and I think it truly is being seen, felt by the public, given some of the public comments we've seen. But also it's having that deterrence for other crimes that are to be committed. And I think that's where we're seeing the calls for service go down overall within the city. On the mental health side, we have seen an increase of twenty one percent this quarter for mental health calls for service. Our fifty one fifty holds are up a hundred percent to thirty six. And our diversion rate is slightly down ninety one percent or to ninety one percent, so down four percent. I can explain some of these stats and stats are stats, right? You can manipulate them in many different ways. But in speaking with CSAT and our commanders, we have taken a different approach about different things. So one, we added an Old Town Officer. That Old Town Officer is allow for more direct contact in, in Old Town, in the areas where we see some of the highest concentration of our community members needing assistance. He has been working collaboratively with CARE to address some, some folks that need some additional attention and trying to get them the assistance they need. So to do that, along with CSAT, to do that with some certain individuals, we have to put them on holds, collaborate with the hospital. We know they're going to be released. It's a repeat process with the ultimate long-term outcome because being they get conserved or get into a long-term type rehabilitation or care facility, and then our calls for service go down. So we will see these increases and decreases throughout time. But it has to do with more of a proactive approach right now. We're taking with CSAT and CARE to address some issues that we've seen and have been dealing with for a while and trying to find more long-term outcomes to deal with those. Short and sweet, like I told you. But if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer.
Councilmember Maltin?
Thank you, and thank you, Chief, for the, the report. Looks like a lot of good news. Had a question about the online reporting. So we saw, so it looks like thirty one incidents that were reported didn't lead to anything.
So the idea behind online reporting is for those types of crimes that necessarily don't have suspect information attached to them, but you need some type of report for an insurance company. So instead of coming to the department and saying that your garden gnome was stolen by an unknown suspect and waiting maybe for an hour for an officer to come out to tell you, here's your CAD number, thank you for reporting that, so you can apply for insurance reimbursement. You can now do that all online and submit that to us. So there's no need for follow-up because there would be no need for follow-up if an officer come out and seen you on that and you're looking for some documentation to give an insurance company or just to have the incident documented with the department. So that we may see, or at least be able to maybe track crime trends that are happening in a particular neighborhood if we see them. So that's what it's kind of built around is that no suspect crime that you just need to report for, for some type of documentation purposes.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. It's not just people reporting imagination. And yes, thank you. That sounds like a good efficiency for officers then to not be spending time on something that is essentially paperwork.
Well, that too, but I think for us, it's more of a benefit for our community members who are working, who don't have time to wait to report things. We're giving them another option to do that. And it's a benefit to us because now we're tracking more crimes that may not have been reported in the past just because they don't want to waste. I hear this all the time, I'm not making this up, but they don't want to waste the cops' times or too busy doing other things to deal with my report. Here's an option for you to do this on your own time, whenever you have time, online. And then our records division reviews all those and brings them into our system for further documentation.
What a valuable tool, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So you said that bike stops have increased. So can you tell me more about that? What kind of bike stops? Are we talking about people riding the wrong way on a one-way? Are we talking about, or on the wrong side of the road? Are we talking about kids in helmets? What kind of, what kind of stops does this look like?
I would have to assume, because I don't monitor all of them, that it would include all those things. But I will tell you that after the last fatal traffic collision during Bike Safety Month, we did give direction to be more aggressive, looking at violations of the law concerning bicyclists that have to do with rules of the road. So more of those people, those folks running stop signs, stop lights, riding the wrong way. The things that are, we see leading to some of the more horrific traffic collisions that we're having. So we're trying to address those and make the public aware of those violations and be more present in that time to hopefully divert some of those accidents from actually happening.
Do you find, or do you think that, are kids pulled over for not wearing helmets? Is that something that's going on?
Afraid if I say yes, and we do research and there's none, and I can't say that for sure. I would hope that officers would address those situations as they or prevail themselves to the officer when they have time to do so.
Okay, I'm just curious about that.
Do you want us to hand out tickets to kids? Is that what you're telling us?
I think wearing a helmet is critical for kids. I've known several kids that have gotten concussions and gone over the handlebars. And we've provided them a helmet more than one time and they don't wear it. I didn't wear a helmet when I was a kid either, but with new information, we need to do better, I think. So that's why I brought that up, but thank you, Miles. And then secondly. Yeah, secondly, I wanted to ask you about the mental health calls. So are you finding, so you were talking about this partnership with CARE. And I know that CARE is now starting or started not long ago to do solo calls without a police officer with them. Are you finding that that is becoming more and more often? Is there an increase in that? And is that freeing up the department more for other, other things?
Yeah, for sure. CARE has been a complete asset to the department in many ways, starting off with the fact that they can relieve us earlier on calls. So we're not spending two officers on a call for a longer period of time to try to resolve something we may not have the resolution for. Secondly, officers know that there are particular folks who have outlets for the issues they're having. They have resources out there and they'll have CARE come with them. They'll make that phone call as soon as they hear what they're being dispatched to and who they're being dispatched to. And then just today, I saw a call that got held for CARE was somebody in our lobby talking nonsensically. Was not a danger to no one, there was no need for an officer to go out there. They dispatched CARE directly to that and they showed up at our office and took the lady away to get her some help. So yeah, I, I believe it's becoming more routine and we're seeing more comfort. There be, everybody's become more comfortable with the process. However, we do not take anything for granted and if there's any safety issues at all, we make sure that there's a dual response for those types of calls.
I'm glad to hear that because that is something that the community has talked about, you know, a lot about, you know, why do you have to have an officer out there? Why can't it just be, you know, this kind of thing? So I really appreciate our city going to bat and making that happen and working together to make that a reality. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Bauer?
No, I want to thank Commander LaFrance for going after the traffic stops because I, I got passed going like fifty on H Street the other day. And I'm like, really? You gotta go fifty here in that big of a hurry, you know? So I think we all appreciate, you know, getting people to abide by the laws. And I, I had a similar question about the fifty one fifties. And I've noticed in Old Town, it seems to be that our actions down there, CARE and our Old Town Officer, seems like we're getting people help. So I really appreciate the department taking, taking a real active role in that. And I'm curious too, what, what we're seeing, what, what the business community, have they noticed a change from our, our taking, you know, doubling the amount of fifty one fifties is a big deal?
Yeah, I don't know if they've seen a change in like, because of the numbers of people were addressing on the street and trying to get to assistance. But I think where they're seeing the change is having the Old Town Officer down there, having some of those concerns addressed quickly. That relationship he's building with those that are living, that hang out down there and being able to get compliance in a lot of ways to make those situations better for both, you know, our visitors coming to our city, those that live here and for our business community in that area.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Thank you. I, the, I wasn't expecting such really dramatic numbers, but I really appreciate it. I really just same thing, kind of comment, thanks, Chief. Thank you also to our commanders and everybody else that's working on this. I think obviously crime prevention and, you know, preventing something worse from happening by watching, you know, traffic and stuff like that is obviously better to turn people or, you know, rerouting through, through, rerouting, you know, mental health issues to people who are mental health providers and stuff like that. I just, I really appreciate all the effort that you guys are constantly engaged in. And it's making a difference. I see people talking about it a lot online. So I wanted to commend you guys for your social media presence too, and constantly making people aware of the fact that you guys are out there and watching them on patrol. You know, I think that's making a really big difference. I haven't heard anybody complain about it. So I think every, surprisingly, and I've heard people joke about being pulled over and said, once was enough. But I haven't heard anybody complain about the fact that you guys are doing more enforcement because I think everyone's felt like those streets, everything's moving way too fast. We've had way too many accidents and everybody's been trying to figure it out. So I just, just want to thank you guys for everything that you're doing because I know you guys are out there and you work crazy hours well beyond a regular forty-hour week, and I know that with all of you, so I just really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
I'll be quick, but I want to echo the support of other council members and especially the traffic enforcement. You know, someone who lives just off of Wabash, that's a street that You know, someone who lives just off of Wabash, that's a street that people really place down. And for sure, there have been some other changes over the years, like additional stop signs and things like that. But I'm excited to make our streets safer for people to be out and just enjoy, you know, being out together. So thank you and. I appreciate the quarterly reports, it'll be interesting to kind of see how the mental health data changes in different quarters. Or if we see different, you know, patterns or, so, yeah, anytime you have the capacity to share more information on that, it's really appreciated, so thank you.
Well, I would have thanked you, but then city manager Slattery derailed me, so. With his lovely comment, so I just wanted to say thank you, I do appreciate all that you're doing.
Yeah, just two other quick things, if we have more information, we'll be releasing it in our cop board meeting as part of our presentation with a new safety device. We're implementing and putting on the streets, a de-escalation policy. Our grants that we've been awarded or hope to be awarded soon, one was signed off tonight, thank you for that on the consent calendar. And then staffing, I know I'm missing something, but it's going to be an informative report, like go into depth and some other things that are happening that's relevant to the cop board and to bring forward in front of them. So if you want to hear that, please tune into that. And then finally, none of this stuff would have happened with the stats, with the change in the mindset with PD and patrol without the commanders pushing it forward. Taking the heat for it a little bit, change is always hard, but I also want to commend the men and women that are out there every day doing it. Because without them and without them buying into it and without them making the changes and seeing the, the results, because we, we publish these every month, they all see what they've done. We wouldn't be where we are today, so we're going to keep pushing them forward, they're going to keep pushing the city forward, so thank you for your support.
Hey, Chief, for the public, so the cop meeting, the cop board meeting is available online, right? You can watch it on Zoom and what day is that, so the, and the time?
Tuesday, July twenty-second at three-thirty here in council.
July twenty-second here?
It's a quarterly meeting. On the fourth Tuesday of that quarter.
And many people might not know what COP stands for, could you tell us what that means?
Community Oversight on Police Practices.
Wonderful, thank you so much. We appreciate you, thanks everybody for a very smooth meeting. We are adjourned.